I'd like to call to order the Malibu City Council Regular Meeting of February 24th, 2020. May I have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Mullen?
Here.
Councilmember Peak?
Here.
Councilmember Wagner?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Pearson?
Here.
Mayor Farrar?
Here.
You have a quorum.
Thank you. May I have an approval of the agenda? Oh, excuse me. Pledge of Allegiance. Lloyd Ahearn, would you please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance? May I have an approval of the agenda?
I move to approve the agenda. Do you want to rearrange any of the items for tonight?
Yes.
I would like to suggest we move the skate item to before the consent items to get the kids home in time to do all their homework, because I know they're excited about that.
I accept that modification to my motion.
Do we have a second?
All second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. May I have a report on the posting of the agenda, please?
The agenda for this meeting is properly posted on February 14th, 2020, with the amended agenda posted on February 21st, 2020.
Thank you, Kelsey. Okay. We will now have a presentation on brush clearance from the Los Angeles County Fire Department, Captain Drew Smith.
Chief Drew Smith.
Chief, excuse me.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, officials that are here. Appreciate it. So I'd like to take a few opportunity minutes of your time to give you the brush inspections and what we're going to do this year. I have a PowerPoint ready for you. Also entertain some questions if you have it. And so just fasten your seat belts, if you wouldn't mind, and we'll do this. So this gives us an overview just reflecting mostly the city of Malibu. And within the city of Malibu, we have a total of four stations that protect the city of Malibu. Those are Stations 70, 71, 88, and 99. So 70s would be east Malibu, 88 central, 71 central, and 99 would be west Malibu. And I'm going to go into, before we get into the brush clearance program, kind of give you a why behind it, if I could take a few minutes to do that. So just that we know that we have imminent threat within Battalion Five, which is the Santa Monica Mountains, which extends from West Lake Village to Hidden Hills and everywhere surrounding, and also with mutual aid impacts from the 405 freeway in that portion with Los Angeles City. So we know we have a red flag that's issued. The Los Angeles County Fire Department responds with a very robust workforce. And routinely on our most catastrophic fires that we see in the Santa Monica Mountains, if they're not contained within the first 15 minutes, the has a high potential for it to go to the Pacific Ocean. So we know that the Santa Monica Mountains are a peaceful place with unique infrastructure in place, and the first responders in the event of a wildland fire have a lot of challenges. And north, just to give you some how much real estate there is, north of the 101 freeway and a lot of the fires, we inherit from the 101 freeway side, approximately 6,000 acres of watershed. South of the 101 has about 112,000 acres of watershed, and totally there's over 120,000 acres just within Battalion Five, which impacts all of us here. So just some fire history lesson here and some climatology lesson. Mostly spring and summer months when we have average and routine climatology, fires are routinely held within a first or second alarm assignment, which can range from seven fire engines, five hand crews, bulldozers, and we're usually what we I like to call gentleman fires that create a nice mosaic portion on the landscape when the fuels are not critical to burn. And they range from five to 25 acres. And in old growth vegetation, you could have larger fires that could range up to 1,000 acres, but it's most likely associated with older growth vegetation, hasn't had fire frequency in some time. But in the fall months is what our wind-dependent fire regime is out here in the Santa Monica Mountains. And we usually have in with wind alignment in those winds, we're challenged with those high San Ana winds of 25,000 acres or greater, and usually 8,000 acres within the first four hours of an incident under a San Ana influence. We have our cooperating agencies within the area here that we get also that robust response, as Los Angeles City Fire Department, Ventura County, the National Park Service, and the Mountains Recreation and Conservation Authority. Well, just to kind of look at some of Battalion Five, and what I've done is I earmarked from Malibu Canyon to the east. So this is where our most vulnerability is right now, post Woolsey Fire, which has approximately 28,000 acres of brush that hasn't seen some fire frequency in quite some time. So just on that fire frequency, here's some of the last fires going back to 2005 that impacted the city of Malibu and also, of course, the Santa Monica Mountains. So the recipe for successful incidents for us or the organization is communications with our stakeholders, public safety partnerships with our cooperating agencies, a robust initial attack response, having evacuation plans in place, disaster drills, and lastly, homeowners complying with required brush clearance and yearly maintenance. So the brush hazard abatement overview is transitioning into this, is homeowners or landowners are notified by mail. Required clearance starts June 1st. You have 30 days to comply, so we'll use some averages here. And just by July 1st, oop, I have a misprint on that. It's actually, I went back 10 years, didn't I? And then by August 14th of 2020, they need to be in compliance, and if those properties are not cleared, they are reported and fined. So just to look at the Malibu fire stations, just for what serves the city of Malibu, they have a total of 4,011 inspections that are done at the jurisdictional station level. So it takes a very robust workforce to assist those stations in those brush clearance inspections. And so we have done that with Forestry Division, which is part of fire prevention, and also we force higher firefighters and put them in staff vehicles to go and help conduct brush inspections. So just looking at a 90-day period, if we extend some of the requirements on days, it averages 45 inspections per station per day. And just looking at the totals for the entire battalion with the 12 stations that are here, we have over 11,000, so closer to 12,000 inspections that we need to do. So it's a very daunting task to get brush inspections done. The timeframes that may be modified is I'm sure that folks that have lived here for quite some time, depending on climatology, sometimes you have early rains, sometimes you have late rains. And what we like to do is evaluate when that rainfall is, because we don't want folks to have to do their vegetation or grass clearing twice. It's very time-consuming, and it costs the homeowner money. So we like to really evaluate if we have to be flexible on those timelines. So what homeowners can do is maintain your property year-round, and it's not just because it's brush clearance time, and I'll use that just because everybody referenced it as brush clearance, is that we need to have that done year-round. So take one bite out of the elephant at a time. Breaking up the plantings in a mosaic pattern, use hard state features and patios, and I have a couple of examples to show you, and eliminate the vertical continuity or transition to fire spread. Well, just looking at if you have a structure, and this is very challenging within the Santa Monica Mountains, because we understand that is not a urbanized street environment. We know that there's a lot of mountainous and challenging road systems, water systems, et cetera, and a lot of unique features. But what gives the firefighters the greatest ability to perform and save lives and property is when we bring down the energy release that's going to impact the vegetation around us and/or the home itself. So this is just what a landscape would look like that has very little to be a receptive portion of an ember cast that would happen throughout the home. I know it's challenging and hard to do, but there is a lot of homes within the Santa Monica Mountains that do have a lot of succulents and rock, et cetera. And that provides a good opportunity for firefighters to engage and have tactical advantages. There's some more pictures here of just some of these landscaping. And within the first five feet of your home is what really helps on that ember cast for things to actually take hold and catch fire around the home, because it's not the advancing forefront in most cases. It is actually the ember cast that happens. So ember casted spot fires, spot fires in a receptive fuel bed is the number one contributor to large fire growth in and around your home. So that's how they get into the eaves, different portions of the chimney, underground crawl spaces, or any of that vegetation surround your home. And I don't even think you can put a number to the amount of embers that are delivered day or night in a wind, but they can land a mile to three miles ahead of the advancing forefront. So in closing, areas between the 101 and Lost Version, East of Topanga have not had fire frequency in over 25 years. The jurisdictional stations of 125, 67, 68, 69s, and 70s, 88s pose the greatest threat, and there leaves approximately 30 square miles and 28,000 acres of old growth vegetation. And then we've also had recent starts within LA City along the 101 to the transition of the 405 and along the 405. On our information page, we have our, you can Google LA County Fire, it looks at, you can see brush clearance program, and it lays out what requirements are needed to be in compliant with our brush clearance program. And any of the fire stations are available to assist. So if there's any questions, I'd love to take questions if there's anybody from the floor.
I got a comment.
Yes, sir.
Thank you very much for coming down, chief. Appreciate it. It's always great education. But I just want to remind everybody, as you illuminated, you know, there's one station out there that's got 2,400 brush inspections to do in Station 71, and the average is like 45 a day. So there's a lot of education that goes on with you can interact with those inspectors when they come to your house, and they give you a lot of hints and tips and those types of things. And just because you haven't had that conversation typically doesn't mean that they haven't done the inspection, because if your house is good, you may not ever talk to them. So the point I wanted to make is that if you want to have that interaction of an advisor to come and look at your house and give you some hints and tips, the city has our Fire Safety Advisor, Jerry Vandermeulen. And so you can contact the city or go up to the city's website to malabucity.org/fire safety, I think. Is that what it is? Yeah. And make an appointment, and it'll come out at no charge. And it's a supplement to what the fire department does, but it's something that the city provides, I would say, in tandem to what the fire department does. So if you miss out on that interaction of an inspector coming to your home, well, we, the city, will make sure that you get that and get that personal one-on-one opportunity to ask questions and get advice and so on and so forth. So I just want to make sure that everybody knew that.
Yes, sir. And we've had a, we receive a lot of phone calls regarding, hey, I've never saw the inspector, he didn't come to my house. But they go by and they do their brush inspections, and just because they didn't talk to him doesn't mean they weren't there. So first line is go to your jurisdictional fire station and talk to them. Second line would be call the battalion chief, and then we will go and make things happen. But we have a good rapport with the community, and we like to maintain that.
Thank you for coming down.
Yes, sir.
How many, just overall, what's the pattern of properties becoming compliant?
I have that. Wait, there's more. Oh, at the, so with the number of compliances last year, within Station 70s would be eastern, we had compliant parcels, 807, 2,338 in 71's area, and 88's area in Malibu, it was 335 in compliance. And in west Malibu, 99's area, we had 516. If I could only do that good at the DMV.
Thank you. I think it's like, it's hard for residents to tell what's going on sometimes. So it's nice to see the numbers.
Yeah, there's, yeah, 11,300, just 11,300 is what goes on throughout the battalion.
You have one quick question. Thank you, Karen. How does your department work with weed abatement? Because many of us get the weed abatement notices, and we don't know if you interact with weed abatement or how that transitions, because a lot of people don't understand that.
Good question. So weed abatement or county ag, they have unimproved parcels. So they're responsible for unimproved parcels. The fire department has improved parcels, which we can add to that what is called a declaration list. So the county ag has a declaration list on unimproved parcels. We have a list of improved parcels. So we do communicate. It is, their inspectors also go out, and sometimes our lists do have the same address with both lists. But just because it's not on our list does not mean we don't engage in enforcement potential with something. And so we try to reconcile our records with theirs. So we do communicate.
Thank you for the clarification.
And just to clarify what you just said, is that an improved parcel has a house on it, and unimproved is essentially a vacant lot.
Correct.
And in case you're wondering, if you had a house on your parcel and it burnt down, you are no longer, you're not, you didn't move into the vacant lot category. You're actually still an improved parcel.
That is correct.
So it's the fire station that still does that inspection.
That is correct. And then if there's any changes, we meet with county ag and go over the list, and it's quite a, it's an ongoing task.
All right. Thank you very much, Chief Smith.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Okay, we now have a presentation to the family of Andy Cohen. Public Safety Chair, Chris Frost, will make the presentation.
Last October 19th, we lost a wonderful Public Safety Commissioner in Andy Cohen. Andy coined the phrase, "I don't want to talk about public safety, I want to do public safety." And he lived by those words. He spoke how we should be self-evaluating collectively and individually, asking ourselves and our peers, "How can we do it better next time, next year, or even tomorrow?" Tonight, I want to present this plaque to his beloved children, Chaya, Kevin, and Chad, who could not be here tonight. This is Andy's nameplate that sat in front of him at our meetings. With the help of Mary Lyndon and Reva Feldman, we have created this wonderful memory to remind them of his love for our city, our love of him, and all that he did to support our safety. Andy, it was truly a joy to hear from you every morning at 6:30 a.m. You reminded me that every day started with public safety. With that...
Well, thank you, Chris, and thank all you guys very much. You know, it was a pretty recent thing for Dad to get involved with the city and the politics. I mean, every single day, he, it pretty much just revolved around cars, like his whole life, and he loved it. So it was kind of, it was really refreshing for him recently. It was a new passion that he'd, I mean, he was 73 in the past, what, year? Year or two, he found a new passion for, you know, public service. He loved the Public Safety Commission. He loved serving on, he loved thinking of new ideas, talking to Chris, talking, you know, talking to every, all you guys. So I don't know, I'm glad he had that. It made him happy to give back and be a part of it.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Want to get a photo?
Got to get a picture. While they're getting the picture, I just want to say a couple of things. Since Andy was my appointee to the Public Safety Commission, I had to make a replacement because Chris Hansen was just gone all the time, and I really didn't know who. So I asked Chris Frost, and he made the recommendation of Andy Cohen, and I'd never met him before. And lo and behold, he became really a phenomenal superstar, I would say, of public service. And he just came in like a bat out of hell, and he said, "I love public safety." And he did so much in a short period of time that it was really impressive. I mean, he said, not just a new standard for, I think, the Public Safety Commission, but for all of us. All of us were like, whoa, this guy's actually getting a lot of things done. He's passionately engaged in his responsibilities. And, you know, he left an indelible mark on the town. So I'm glad that it was, that you were able to have a front row seat at that and that it was a positive thing for him. And his loss is a severe tragedy for the whole town, and I'm sure it is for you. But I just want to thank you, because oftentimes it's the family that pays the price for public service, you know, when not only are they working, but then they come home and they've got this other gig that they're now, takes a lot of their time. It's the family that pays the price for that. So I wanted to thank you for your dad's service, and I appreciate you coming down here and accepting this recognition from Chris. Thank you very much, Chris. It was a very nice gesture. Appreciate that.
Okay, thank you. Next, we have item 2A. I do have speaker slips. So I'll call you up by three, if you don't mind coming close to the front, so we don't lose time between speakers. The first speaker is Michael O'Mary, and then Craig Hill, and then Norm Haney.
Honorable Mayor, honorable City Council members, City Manager, it's good to be here, and I wish I didn't have to be here speaking to you about this situation. I am here to request a, of you to take an action to, for a future agenda item on the subject that I raised over, by writing over the past two weeks with my emails to each one of you. I had to do this because we had no replies by the city engineer whatsoever to our phone calls before the emails came up. What in stake here is the civic center improvement, the way improvement, stormwater, in particular, stormwater specifications are defective in many, many ways, too many ways for the city of Malibu to ignore and not to act on correcting. Those defects are involved regulatory non-compliances, both state and federal regulation non-compliances, defective engineering that will import pollutants into the soil and into the fresh rainwater, encompassing one, over thousands of pounds of petrochemical membranes under the stormwater catch systems. So they will contaminate the soil and the water for 100 years to come, perhaps many hundred years to come. There is an alternative that the city engineer refusing to discuss with us whatsoever. And that alternative, it will comply, will deliver healthy, clean water that is already demonstrated with over 100,000 data points by third-party universities in the past six years, and continuous deployments of the system. But for some reason, we had no replies by the county engineer, the city engineer, or the engineer of record. And it is the duty right now of the city council to act on it, because there is a legal question here. It's an open, the city for a huge liability of non-compliance, of installing systems and spending public money on systems that didn't work while they know there is a system in their hand that would have done the job and comply fully. I would like to hear your comments. And please schedule this for hearing in the next meeting or two.
Thank you. Okay, our next speaker is Craig Hill. You have four minutes. Is Hashi Clark here? Thank you. And then Norm Haney, and then Mary Ann Riggins.
Good evening, Mayor Farrar, council members. Some comments on the planning process. Commissioners in representing the public interest are required to be critical, to read the planning codes closely and faithfully, and to accommodate stakeholder interests only within those constraints. When the numbers in a staff report don't pencil out, as happens too often, it's the commission's job to ask why. If you're scared to face a commissioner, it could be because you're scared of what the code says. The codes can't cover every contingency. Sometimes interpretation is necessary. Sometimes the staff will make an interpretation that doesn't comport with the written code. As one example, last Tuesday, the commission heard an application for which the two-thirds rule, designed to ensure that houses are less bulky on the second story, was being interpreted in a way that stood the written code on its head, allowing a house bigger on top than on the bottom. We read the read the clear language of the code and voted it down. Now, it's unfortunate the applicant spent time developing the plan, but more so that they were led to rely on a version of the two-thirds rule that contradicts the written code. Now, I have a law degree, which helps in reading the code, and none of the planners do to my knowledge. So in advance of that meeting, I had called Trevor and asked about the rule. And he confirmed that my reading was reasonable and that it was an interpretation for the commission to make. So it was, and there was nothing rogue about it. But the concern is that some codes are habitually misinterpreted in what looks like a systemic pattern. Internal staff interpretations tend to be more permissive, leaning towards overdevelopment, or running contrary to the requirement of maintaining rural character. This happens with primary ridge lines, lot line adjustments, ESHA buffers, beach house string lines, neighborhood character, sea rise allowance, lot setbacks, and others. Just one consequence of chronic permissiveness is ever more traffic on PCH. And now we're going to have another half mile of concrete sidewalks in Civic Center instead of rustic pathways. Hopefully, the city can learn from this. The council should order an independent study that answers questions like, what are all the internal codes used by planning? Which ones haven't been approved by council? Have they been applied fairly to applicants and neighbors? The commission shouldn't have to make critical decisions based on fuzzy mutable rules. It's not fair to developers either. Such a study would increase transparency and improve institutional memory. It's all the more important that we tighten the ship as we face a wave of new state housing laws. With an ADU plus a junior ADU on many properties, we're threatened by the triplexification of Malibu. That could soon mean twice as much traffic. We simply must be more judicious about what gets built. If you're rebuilding a burned house, your planning experience should be simple and quick. Conversely, if you're metastasizing one more giant spec house into a rustic neighborhood, you shouldn't be allowed to cut any corners. Let's make sure that city planning is more than just a euphemism for development approval. Now, I appreciate the opportunity to have served the community, and I believe I've made a positive contribution throughout this post-Wolsey era. My dismissal is puzzling and troubling, but Mikey and I both care deeply about Malibu and will find a way to move forward. I'd be happy to share more of my perspective personally with anyone who might be interested. And let me just say, I've, some people heard they can't speak on this item now, but this is a done deal. This happened five days ago officially. It's not item 7A on the agenda. That's about appointing the new person. So anybody who wants to talk about anything related to this stuff should be allowed in the public comments. Thank you.
So Mr. Adam, just on that last point, the speakers on that item should wait till 7A because that, that will be the time, the appropriate time to talk to that.
I, I received, I received official termination from the state five days ago. So it's, it's old business.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Norm Haney, followed by Mary Ann Riggins, followed by Scott Dietrich.
I wonder if you could check my card again. I was actually signing up for 4A, not 2A. The districting. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so Mary Ann Riggins, followed by Scott Dietrich, followed by Jeff Greer. Greer, sorry.
Thank you, Mayor and Council members. I've been losing my voice. I was reviewing the City Managers' update, and one I wanted to compliment the update. It's quite thorough. I think it's a great source of resource, and I think Reva and everyone responsible for putting that out, everybody in the community should be checking those to find out what's going on and around. But as I was doing that, I came across the next-gen bus plan. And within the next-gen bus plan, it's the framework for what Metro's going to be doing with bus lines throughout LA County. And our line specifically, the 534, they're proposing to reduce, renaming it to 134, eliminate any of the buses on Point Doom. And also, there were comments at the public meeting that they held here, I believe it was last fall, that there wasn't enough of a connection between our bus line and the new metro station for the transit line that goes to downtown and everything. It doesn't look like they've done anything to clarify that. So you're essentially left a couple of blocks from where the bus line ends to where Metro is. And there's nothing in here about signage or improving anything with that. But one of my biggest concerns, along with the elimination of the Point Doom route, which has been in practice for decades, is there's no connection with us to the Valley and Thousand Oaks, Woodland Hills, anything like that. And why that's important is more and more residents are going to the Valley and other things too. Nobody wants to go to the West Side anymore. It's, even if you're riding a bus, it's still too cumbersome. So by having a connection to the Valley, it will allow one residence to get there for services and goods and doctor's appointments and everything else in a more friendly manner. It will also allow for residents from those areas to come to our area, not clog up our roads through the canyons, and allow people to access our beaches, not in their cars. And if we're really serious about improving opportunities on Pacific Coast Highway, we need to get people out of their cars. We're dealing with parking issues. We're dealing with just a whole host of vehicles on our roads, and it's causing anger, accidents, deaths, everything else. And what we should be doing is working with the county to make sure that people have transit that they can actually take and get them out of their cars. They can be on their phones. They can take pictures. They can do all that looky-loo things and reduce the volume. So we actually can move around our city before we're in total gridlock. So I would hope that we continue to work with the county and with Metro to actually address those issues and work towards providing those types of connections. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Scott Dietrich, followed by Jeff Greer, followed by Paul Grisanti.
Thank you, Mayor Farrar and Council. In regards to planning, I've noticed long before this latest issue came up, there doesn't seem to be anything specific enough in too many instances where both the applicant and the planning commissioner knows exactly what the rules are. And this just repeats itself over and over. And so Planning Commission gets in these big arguments about what it should be, what it shouldn't be. And I think that really requires direction from Council. I don't know if Craig's idea of having an, an analysis by an independent force is the right idea, but I think we need to make this very clear. And it's been brought up many times by planning commissioners usually saying, they're, they're pleading for your help. They're saying, "Let us know what the rules are." And if we all know what the rules are and what it takes for a variance, I think it would really streamline this. It is, it's just incredible to me that someone who is rebuilding their house, in spite of all the city help, it's going to take 15 months minimum to rebuild, but more like two years for the average person. That shouldn't be. If you're doing something simple, it should be simple. And then, of course, there's the complex issues and that you're really going to take a lot of work. So please do that. Secondly, I think we all read in the Malibu Times, the difficulty the residents of Sycamore Canyon are having, and with Mr. Edmondson. And I think that this is just another power grab on the part of the Santa Monica Mountains Conservancy. And I would again ask that we as a city do everything we can to support those residences because they may be facing it now. We, the rest of us, will face it later. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Jeff Greer, sorry, followed by Paul Grisanti, followed by Christopher Carradine.
Good evening. Thanks for listening. In 1993, what has come to be known as the Old Topanga Fire swept through the Big Rock Maces community, destroying 40 out of 240 residences. Homes burned as firefighters stood by and watched, unable to do anything, as the one resource that could stave off the structure fire spread was unavailable. Big Rock, as many other Malibu communities, receives its water supply from a network of electrically powered pumps. In the case of Big Rock, three pump stations located at increasing elevation move water to a grouping of three large tanks situated in the hills above our neighborhood. We receive our potable water through a piping system driven by gravity. Those tanks are replenished once a day. The process takes about eight hours. If the pumping regimen is interrupted in any way, the community is left with a finite and dwindling supply of water. This was the case in 1993. Power was shut off due to a PSPS. Water consumption was not. By the time the fire arrived, the tanks were dry. We have spent this year working with stakeholders, including LA Water, District 29, and SCE. It has been determined that the solution to our water supply problem is a series of three diesel-powered generators that would be permanently wired to each of the pump stations. District 29 has devised a way to actually increase the flow of water during a wildfire PSPS situation. I don't want to get too granular on this, but they basically bridge the pumps that are in each, there's two pump stations, each station, they, they, they basically bridge the pumps. Earlier this year, LA Water, District 29, signed a letter of understanding, which I have a copy of here, in which they agreed to provide generator hookup and ongoing generator maintenance. In October, the Big Rock Board, which I'm a member, approved the retention of an electrical engineer to spec out the wiring and generator requirements. We received his report last week and have sent his plans out to three generator sales organizations that'll bid on this. And we're again in the process now of collating that. They will be bidding basically on three mobile generators, 275 kilowatt, 150, and 100 kilowatt. Our community has raised some money towards this goal, but we feel that other stakeholders, we already have the water department, I feel SCE should be involved in this, and most importantly, here, this government. While we can't entirely prevent wildfires, we can mitigate the fire risk acceleration caused by ensuing structure fires. It is so often that the embers, let me just finish this, from a neighbor's burning house that spreads the devastation to communities where water and electricity are married to PSPS, it's like receiving a burn notice. Now with the PSPS outages being counted on in hours, but in days, it just intensifies the situation. Bottom line, we need your help.
Thank you. The last two speakers are Paul Grisanti and Christopher Carradine.
Greetings, Mayor and Councilpeople. Such a pleasure to be here today. I just want to make a few comments on voting, early voting at Juan Cabrillo. As you know, it was open starting on Saturday at 8 o'clock. And unfortunately, while they received all the machines that you actually vote on, they didn't receive the iPads that allowed them to program who was actually there. And they spent the entire day Saturday waiting for those items to arrive. On Friday, I went by there again. And while they had finally received the iPads, they came with incorrect codes to enable them to use them. So I left and went and had an open house instead of voting. Later that day, apparently, close, right before they closed for the day, they were able to get them working and they were able to have four people vote. And I showed up today, this morning, and was the third person to vote. And I can tell you that I'm thankful that we weren't doing it all this, we only had one day to vote because it would have been a total mess. But now, they're ready for you. Go by Juan Cabrillo, vote in advance. It's going to be good. The other thing I want to do is comment on the work that is currently underway on the Ensignal Canyon by District 29. After, they delayed people's permitting until October, and they said they would let them start work then, and they did. But they actually broke ground on their work there, starting February the 3rd. And they sent out an announcement on the 20th that in addition to working five days a week, they're also going to work every other Saturday. So I'm glad that District 29 is taking the steps to put things together. And I'm also glad to hear that Big Rock is taking steps to make their neighborhood more resilient. And that's a thing all neighborhoods should be doing. Thank you.
Thank you. And the final speaker for 2A is Christopher Carradine.
Good evening, Councilpeople. I'm City Manager. Hi, Reva. How are you? Good to see you. Carolyn's on a cruise, and so she sent me an email and said, "I was also booked on the cruise, but I couldn't go because we're actually building our house. And there's something every day that I've got to answer as the architect of record." But she's on a cruise and she observed a couple of things that I wanted to bring your attention to. As we know, during the Wolsey Fire, early in the fire, as the fire transitioned through the mountains, Canaan, because of the wooden power poles, became essentially impassable. And that probably was one of the many hindrances, not the only, but one of the many hindrances to getting equipment to this side of the mountains to get in front of the fire, for example. On her cruise, she stopped in Key West. That was her first stop. In Key West, they had a major fire in the late 19th century that destroyed the entire island down to the sand. Afterwards, they rebuilt Key West, but they required all the roofs be metal and they required a firefighting system that was using pumps from the ocean because they have limited freshwater supplies. That's Key West, okay? Then she stopped in Cozumel. Now, except for the cruise port and the little tourist village that's sort of at the center of Cozumel and a few of the luxury hotels, the rest of Cozumel is essentially another favela, basically a shanty town. And really, the only industry, other than taking in each other's laundry, is servicing the cruise, the cruise tourists that come into the city. But she went on an outbound tour to go out and see some Mayan ruins and things like that. And on the way, she noticed something peculiar. There were no power lines. She said, "Don't you have any electricity?" "Oh, yes. We had a hurricane about 12 years ago." Government made the order that all the power lines have to be underground for fire protection because they don't want another fire and they don't want hurricanes damaging the power systems in such a way that emergency responders can't get into the city to either do rescues or to do after-disaster responses, et cetera. So I mention all of this because I really think it's the responsibility of the city of Malibu to buttonhole SCE and whomever else you need to, regardless of whether or not you have any authority, but to buttonhole them on a weekly basis and try and understand why they replaced all the burnt power poles on Canaan with wooden power poles. Why didn't they at least put up metal power poles as they did in Malibu Canyon, which I believe was done as a result of a lawsuit, not as the result of a fire. That alone would increase the security of our area because it would, it would leave Canaan probably still accessible to fire equipment if they're going to stage on the other side of the hill in the future. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, that's it for public comments on items not on the agenda. Next, do we have any commission or committee updates? Reva, do you have a City Managers' report?
I do. Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, everybody. Mr. Grisanti, you stole a bit of my update with your voting information. LA County does have all of its vote centers open now. The way we are going to be voting is different than we have in the past. And so I encourage you to go to lavote.net where you can get information about how you'll go vote this year. And the polls will be open to vote until March 3rd. So you do have time and hopefully they'll get through all the hiccups that Mr. Grisanti encountered. I wanted to let the community know that I've been working with the sheriff's station to come up with some additional patrols to address kind of the influx that we've gotten of complaints about homeless individuals and transients and some problems, particularly after hours. So we're going to try for the next 30 days what they call saturation patrol, where we'll have two cars with two deputies in it each, patrolling through the city. And what's different about these deputy cars is that they won't go out on calls when they come in from the station. come in from the station. So what normally happens is if you have a regular deputies are out looking, checking out, seeing what's going on, and a call for service comes in, they have to go respond to that service call, and they can't assist with what they're doing. So we're hoping with some more concentrated patrols, we'll—we'll get a better handled, particularly in the evening hours. Fortunately, we had some additional funds in our public safety budget that I'll be able to absorb those costs for—for thirty days. So I wanted to let you know that, and that'll come forward as an information item to the Public Safety Commission next week. Coming up, we have a library speaker series this Wednesday, February twenty-six, at seven o'clock here at City Hall. You can make a reservation to hear Mohammed Al Samawi, who will be speaking. We have a couple big items coming forward to the Planning Commission. On March sixteenth, they'll be discussing accessory dwelling units, and there's a special meeting on March thirtieth where they'll be discussing short-term rentals. Also wanted to let you know, we have coming up at the next city council meeting on March ninth, the first reading of the dumpster locking lid ordinance, and as part of preparing—preparing for that, staff has been out in the community, talking with commercial properties. We've inspected thirty properties in the last two weeks, and nineteen of them had a clean bill of health and were in compliance of the upcoming ordinance, and eleven were given notices, so hopefully they'll clean up their areas. And we mailed two hundred letters to different commercial properties. We also are working on a workshop for our dark sky ordinance, and that will be on April first. And as part of that ordinance, which will come into effect in the next year or so for all of the commercial properties, we did mail letters out to all of them. And then I just wanted to speak about the wooden poles to Mr. Carradine. There actually is an easy answer. It's not a great answer, but it is an answer. Immediately after the Woolsey Fire, Edison lost close to two thousand poles in the Woolsey Fire area. And in order to replace wooden—existing wooden poles or wooden poles that had burned with concrete poles or other types, they would actually have to go through a full planning process and an environmental review process, which we—and engineering, which we all know takes considerable amount of time. So in the interest of getting the power back on in this area, they simply replaced the existing wooden poles. I know it's not a good answer, but that's—that's the reason why that happened. So what we are working on, though, from the city, is there's some funding sources that will be coming out from the state through different initiatives, and we're looking at applying for as many of those grant funds that we can to further the undergrounding efforts in the city. So that's something we're working on, on the staff level. And also for water pumps, we'll be looking at funding sources for that. So that concludes my report, unless you have any questions for me.
I have a question, Reva. Can you comment on any of the personnel changes at the Lost Hills Sheriff's Station recently?
Certainly, Mayor. Last week, I received a call from our commander for the Northern Patrol Division—that's where our station is located—who informed me that our captain, Matt Vanderhorch, was going to be transferred, and they brought in an acting captain, Chuck Becerra, who is the acting captain. And so that's the information that I have about the sheriff's station.
Okay. Thank you. Anybody have any questions? Skylar?
Reva, you mentioned something about some state funding related to water pumps. Is that something that would be able to help the folks in Big Rock? Or is...
I don't know at this time. There is some—some grant funds that will be coming available through Proposition Eighty-four, and the intent of the measure was for wildfire mitigation projects. So we're trying to look broadly at those funds to see of all the kind of high priority things that the council's identified over the past year, where we might be able to get some funds. So we'll look at it for everything. I just mentioned those two because there had been speakers about them, but we'll look at all of the different important initiatives that we have going on.
And then is—would any of that stuff—in—I don't—I don't know the validity to the stuff related to the stormwater that was brought up, but is there any change of anything that's going on there? I mean, I didn't—I'm not privy to that.
So my understanding that the speaker is a vendor and he has a particular product, it's not compliant with the MS four permit that we're under the purview of from the Regional Water Quality Control Board, so we're aware of what he is, and he's welcome to bid on the project, which is currently out to bid.
Thank you very much.
Okay, we will now have council reports. Who would like to go first?
I'll go first because I wanted to also address some of the speakers to Mr. Omari. I'm on the Board of Directors of the Santa Monica Bay Restoration Commission, the TAC, the Technical Advisory Committee. It's a membership of three to five, depending on who's running the show that time. They have reviewed these plans, and there was no objections, and this is a pretty critical group when it comes to water quality. On the Santa Monica Bay Board Restoration Commission, we have members of the State Water Board and the Local Water Board, as well as representatives from Senator—no, Assemblymember Bloom's office, Sheila Kewell's office, Henry Stern's office. So it's a pretty powerful board of people that watch out for our water quality, and if there were any deficiencies in the Civic Center project as far as the water quality, they would have been cited. So if you want to get into the details and you want to contact me, I'd be welcome to have that conversation with you. But even with my critical review, the project water quality is not going to impact anything as far as I reviewed. Speaking of Mary Ann, remember the beach bus? So I spoke to John Mazza some weeks ago, and it appears that he's trying to push a plan forward to have a local bus in between all these new shopping centers. He had mentioned it to me before. I think that will help alleviate some of the traffic concerns that you mentioned, and thank you for mentioning that because you're hands-on with that, and you feel it just like the rest of us. And as far as that—the bus in the Civic Center area—we had that a couple of years ago. It was done by the—the—the various malls. They paid for it out of their pocket, so maybe John can pull that together and get that bus back. It's sitting right now in Calabasas, near that hotel, catching spider webs. I'm almost done. And Jeff, thanks for the mention on the—on the—on the power pumps. It's not only at the east end of town, but it's something that we need to consider at the west end of town, just because it burned, and we have a lower profile for another burn at the west end. It's the same problem coming over from Las Virginies, as well as coming up from District Twenty-Nine. Thanks for the mention.
Mayor, could I just add one thing to—to what Councilmember Wagner brought up about the shuttle system? As you know, the city did purchase the island property with transportation dollars, so it can be used as a park-and-ride, and staff is working on an ordinance for parking as a standalone use, and that will be coming forward to Zerasis in the next few weeks and moving on to the Planning Commission. So once we get that in order, that's certainly something that can help towards some of these transportation uses, so I just wanted to throw that in there.
Thanks. The bus can turn around there, too. Thank you. Appreciate that. So my report from the Santa Monica Bay Restoration Commission is that the Adamson House Foundation received funds from state parks to do the water hydrology testing directly in front of the Adamson House to help with the understanding of what's going wrong there with the Malibu Lagoon breach, and that was one of the topics. And if anybody wants any more detailed information on that, you can reach out to me. I did mention to the board that the city had handed out the RFP OK to the engineering firm, and now we're looking for equal funding to help us with that, so hopefully somebody will come forward and match our funds. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Jefferson.
Mary Ann, thank you for bringing up the stuff about Metro. I definitely see some concerns with that. It would be interesting to see how Metro would explore opening up something with the other side of the hill. I know that's been a concern for a lot of different people on both sides for—and, you know, we had brought it up to Metro when they had their—their meeting here about—what was that, over a year ago, seems like? So be ashamed to see that they're going to cut service in some of the areas, but, you know, I'd be curious to know, I think, like I had mentioned a long time ago, how much that service is getting used and if it could be better allocated. Scott and Craig, thank you for bringing up the concerns in regards to planning, and Craig, thank you for your service to the city on the Planning Commission. It'll be interesting to see what happens at Sycamore, and I know that the entirety of the council is following that closely. And it's super lame what's going on over there. I will leave that at that. Jeff, if you could come back to us when you get those costs and that stuff a little bit further along—sounds like you guys are almost there. I'd be curious, maybe the whole council would want to hear a little bit more on that and where you guys are at for the backup power system for the pumps up Big Rock. I don't know where the city could—has funds in its current budget or where we could try to help find funds, but I'm sure the city staff, we could get to look into any grant funds or anything from the state to help you guys out with that. Our Clean Power Alliance Board meeting, they—we are going to be going to a hundred percent renewable default for the city of Malibu. They made the decision that that will happen in the fall of next year, and so Malibu is the first city that had joined the CPA that is going from a lower tier to the greener tier, because many of the cities that went into it just went into it at the hundred percent renewable rate in the beginning. But it's a good thing that we're—we're doing it, and then it looks like a few other cities are going to follow suit. So that's awesome, and I'm glad that—that the city made the decision to do that, and that's what I got. Thank you.
Thank you, Skylar. Rick?
Thank you, Mayor. Craig Hill, thank you for your service. Are you still here, Craig? I hear you. Partially, how I got elected, along with my team Malibu cohorts, is the staff's lips moving and the developers' words coming out. And it's—it's—you make a good point, and nothing against our hard-working staff, who I think does a great job, but they're dealing with the builders and developers on a daily basis all the time, you know, and the check and balance of that is going from the Planning Commission, who are appointed by the elected representatives of the people to kind of ensure that the rules and regulations are being followed. And I think that the Planning Commission has a tough job. It's harder than this job if you do it right and if you're diligent about it, because a lot of staff reports that you have to read and you have to go out there. And it's sort of the front line on the battle for Malibu, which is essentially preservation versus overdevelopment, which is right there in the mission statement for the city of Malibu. So I want to thank you for all your hard work and—for the hard work of all everyone on the Planning Commission, because they've done a really good job, and I know it's not easy, and they get a lot of grief from people. And the results are positive, though, and I think that a lot of the buildings that are getting built are within the rules and regulations as they were written, without too many, you know, exceptions for this, exceptions for that, and a lot of those big giant homes that were just like, "Sure, it looks good to me, it looks good to me," that happened a long time ago, are not happening now, and I appreciate all the hard work that you've done, and thank you very much for your service to the community, as well as all the other hard-working planning commissioners. That is not an easy job, so I just want to say thank you, and I know what you're talking about. Mary Ann, great point about the public transportation going over the hill. I think most people, at least when we go outside the, you know, the city walls to go gather provisions that aren't available here in the city, we—we go over the, you know, the twelve miles to Agora or Thousand Oaks or whatever, and I think most people do. So that's—that's an excellent point. Scott, you bring up a good point, which I think I just hammered home in my comments about Craig on the grayness of the rules for planning, and the implications are significant. You know, the implications of some of these little nuances of what happens on a ridgeline or what the rules are on these things. And of course, you know, the developers are steeped in it. They live it. They—you're sitting right next to one, as a matter of fact. He knows the rules better than anybody, and when they come to play, they're at work, and they're—that's their job. Their job is to get it over the goal line, you know, and then we have some unpaid appointees who are tasked with getting—being literate with all the nuances. It's—it's a challenging thing, and I—I respect Norm—I'm just kidding, giving you grief, but, you know, I respect—he's an ardent advocate for his clients, and these gentlemen are the ardent activists for preserving the mission statement in the city of Malibu and—and the general plan. So you make a really good point, and maybe—that maybe we need to have continuing education for all the key points in the—in the planning directives or something like that, but I just want to recognize that. That's an excellent point. Jeff Greer, and I'm normally not one of these guys who likes to comment on every speaker, but we had such great speakers tonight, but Jeff, is this the first time that the city is aware of what you guys are doing there with all those—the pumps, et cetera, and all of that? Okay, because it's probably something that you should be talking to the Public Works Department and giving them visibility, and, you know, it sounds like you guys are pretty far along in this process, but come on down and—and let the Public Works Director and the City Manager know exactly what's going on, because this is a very important point for not only your neighborhood, it—for all neighborhoods here, and we all should be talking to each other and—and learning from each other and figuring out how we can tap into whatever resources to solve this complex issue. And I—I'm impressed, you know, that you grabbed the bull by the horns and are—wrestling it into submission, and it sounds like you guys are—are making it happen. So thank you very much, but please continue to talk to us, talk to the City Manager, the Public Works Director, and let's figure out how we can all be smart about this and work together as a team. So thank you very much for coming down and making your commentary. The other thing I want to talk about was the Sheriff's Department and our sort of revolving door of Lost Hills commanders over there. It's weird for me because in my other job, I am a county employee, and I'm a fireman, and usually in towns, the firemen are popular and the deputies are not as popular, but that's like the reverse in Malibu. We've had some extremely popular deputies and leaders in Lost Hills that we've been really lucky to have, and for some reason, they keep disappearing. You know, Josh Ty was the first one. He had a stroke, a legitimate issue, that took him out of the picture right before the Woolsey Fire. But then we had Jim Royal, who was stellar, and he got transferred out. I don't really know why still. I understand he's got a lawsuit against the department. Then we had Jen C. Two, who stepped up to the plate and did a phenomenal job and really hit the ground running and established a great rapport with the community, got a lot of things done, was super popular, and it's not easy to be in law enforcement and to have a really good rapport with the public and get a lot of support from the public. It's easy for the fire department. It's not as easy for law enforcement. We've had some great leaders here. And then there's Captain Vanderhorch, who now he's been transferred out. And you know, I'm listening to KNX, and I heard some story of some resident who picked up the phone and called the sheriff, and next thing you know, he's—I don't know what the story is, but clearly there's something going on here, and I'm not sure what the deal is, but we'll turn the Wayback Machine to—you know, within the last couple of years, I—I got some correspondence from residents who were complaining about something about the Sheriff's Department. Either it's one incident or a number of things, and they said, "Hey, why don't we have our own law enforcement department, or why don't we get a different law enforcement department?" And I thought, "Well, you know, I can understand why they're upset because of a particular incident that they're involved in, either themselves or a family member, and they're mad." But there's no way that we could do something like that when you consider all the resources that the Sheriff's Department brings to the table and what extensive resources that they have, that they can draw on, not just the number of people here, but... Maybe the time has come for us to consider something like that. And I don't take that lightly, but I'm not on the cog, and I don't have those discussions like you guys do on the cog, but I would just throw it out there that maybe you guys could bring it up to the cog and—and see what—get their pulse and find out how they feel about this, because—I understand it, our commanders are selected by all of the cities that use Lost Hills as the station, and I haven't spoken to them about this, but as our representatives, I'm hoping that you can figure out how they feel about it. Maybe—maybe, you know, maybe we could—if they—if they feel the same way that we do, we could consider it. And it—and it's not an easy thing to say. It's really not an easy thing to say, but we've had some superior leaders in this department, in the Sheriff's Department, and we've had some outstanding rank-and-file people who are out there on a day-to-day basis, doing some really good work, and I don't know what's going on. I really don't know what's going on, but it's like musical chairs there for all the great people that we've had. I can understand it if it was just, you know, a ho-hum people that are there, and then the next one comes, and there's no difference. But these people are superstars, and they've done an excellent job of reaching out to the community and solving some murders. I mean, just throw one thing out—I mean, Jim Royal solved a murder of a homeless person out in the bushes. He solved it, and that can't be easy to do, and that takes a lot of gumshoe work, and not to mention all the other things that they've done. These are very popular leaders with this—the residents of— They're, they're, these are very popular leaders with this, the residents of Malibu, and something is wrong. So I would just ask that maybe bring back an item to consider it or bring it up with the cog that, as ridiculous as it sounded when I first heard it, about trying to consider a different law enforcement support for the city of Malibu. Let's, let's talk about that. Okay? And that's all I got. Thank you.
Thank you Rick. Mikey?
Thank you Mayor. Hey kids, I know we put you to the front of the line, but it's still just, it's government. It's painfully slow. So hang in there. You're really at the front of the line in like an hour. No, it'll, it'll be sooner than that, I hope. Thank you to all the speakers. It has already been said, some excellent, excellent comments. Chief Drew Smith, that was informative. Chris Ross, appreciate it. I know he's gone now. Appreciate you doing the plaque for Andy's family. That was great. Mary Ann, that Next Gen Bus really caught my attention. That, having that bus from the valleys actually really fits into a lot of thoughts I'd had, but I hadn't thought of that idea. So that's really good. I know we've done it before too. So thank you for bringing that up. That was great. Jeff, everyone else has brought it up. Yes, we, I know we emailed just a little bit. Thank you for your communication. And then I, I was thinking something as you were speaking about it and then, then Paul said it. So yeah, the, you're right. But now I realize everyone in Malibu is going to want to do it. So we're going to have to do some thinking about how to do this. It is a great, at least short-term, long, short-term solution and it's necessary. And I'm very worried for your neighborhood and my stepmom who lives there and you guys and everyone there. So that, let's, yes, we're still on this obviously. It's, it's a big deal. And Paul, I didn't know that Ensignal had, wherever he went, I don't see him. There he is. I didn't know that work had started in Ensignal. That's great. I missed that. That's really exciting news. I had absolutely no idea about that. So that's super good. Your comments were correct. It's, parts of the code are fuzzy because unfortunately every property in Malibu is not the same. So there's, it's, it's, it's complicated. Let's, let's leave it at that. And Craig, thank you. I really do. I appreciate you 100%. Your passion, your intelligence. I know how hard you worked at this and I really appreciate it. Kind of said last time we spoke, well, you know, we'll speak among ourselves. So all I'm going to say is, you know, it's, I guess it's all about communication and I take my share of the blame on any poor communication. Absolutely, 100%. And with that, I respect you and I'm glad to get together and, and chat more at any time. So thank you. I really appreciate it. Couple more items here. A group of us, including the mayor, went down to the Laguna Beach Shelter and met with them. They were absolutely fantastic. The entire city really welcomed us and our group and gave us a very long breakdown on how they got to having a shelter and how it works and what they've learned. And then we got to go to the shelter and it was incredibly eye-opening. I think for all of us there, we were impressed and surprised and it made it look really possible to do something that accomplishes. If you have, if you have a thought on homelessness in Malibu, it encompassed that in my opinion. It doesn't matter where you stand. I think they've done a fantastic job. We are very fortunate that they absolutely love Malibu. I guess prior city councils have really supported them and they don't forget it and they're there for us. So it was really notable. Quite an experience. Long drive. And if it's everything Laguna Beach is exactly double Malibu, from population to the homeless issue to everything. So it's an interesting model there to look at. The next day, we met with the Malibu Working Group on homelessness. And that discussion pushed further and it feels like that group is really rallying to help us figure out how to move forward. And then that, that just rolled right into the mayor and I being interviewed by Pepperdine on this issue as well. We've availed ourselves to the Pepperdine Journalism Department whenever possible. They're fantastic. So working on this issue on multiple fronts, that's not everything, but that's some highlights. We are definitely pushing forward on all, all points to try and deal with this community issue. That's what I feel it is, is a community issue and we have to integrate how we're going to effectively deal with the homeless situation in our community. And we, we've got a long ways to go, but, but we are moving forward. I was also at the meeting of the Community Wildfire Protection Plan. Certainly interesting meeting, but by putting together that plan, it gives us a better access to getting grants. So it's a worthy exercise on multiple levels. And that was well done. Jerry, Jerry was there, did a great job. I missed the Saturday one, but the Thursday one was good. The mayor and I, you know, I'll just let you talk about this one. I'll just mention it. We were in Palm Springs area this Friday, Saturday at a USC Price School Sustainability Forum. And it was absolutely fascinating. Senator Ben Allen was there. Stop there and let you handle that one because it was, was really, really worthy. I also want to give a shout out to our own KBUU. Last week KBUU won the Golden Mic Award for the radio tele, from the Radio Television News Association of Southern California. The Surf Report and Mo Chilinger, if I'm saying it right, were singled out as part of that. KBU beat out KNX, KFI, KCRW and KPCC in that category and is the first low-power community radio station in the nation to beat out the city competitors in a major journalism excellence competition. So it's been five years to, I think it's Wednesday that they've been on the air. We've got a group of volunteers that keeps it running except for a few days after the fire. And the last five years, tens of thousands of pre-public service announcements for the community. So I just want to say a really huge thank you to, and congratulations to KBUU. And lastly, Parker, can you, oh, it's up. So I just wanted to share this that I saw today and I thought it was really interesting. This is the report from January on the fire department calls, what they go out on. So whatever vision you have, this is kind of the reality of what the fire department deals with. And I'm just going to make it easy. The blue is medical calls. So virtually everything to a high, high level is medical calls, which is, I thought, just interesting enough to share because I think we're all thinking it's, you know, various things, fires or whatever. But the reality is, it's, they are become our first responders on medical. And that's it. I just wanted to share that and just thought-provoking. And thank you all very much.
Okay, thank you Mikey. I want to say thank you to the speakers and people who've been emailing us this week. I won't repeat everything. Mary Ann, I was thinking the same thing about the beach bus. It can be done. We all know that. So thank you for bringing it up tonight. Scott Dietrich, thank you for the reminder about the MRCA and Sycamore Canyon. It seems like some Kafka novel, but it's actually happening in our city. And it should be a caution to everybody else of what is actually possible. Jeff, thanks for your email and for coming to speak about that tonight. And thank you for the research you've done. It looks like you've been working on this for a long time. The 93 fire, yeah, I think we lost 240 homes, starting with my property line of my backyard at that time. I'd love to find a way to do this. It seems like if we could define some of our primary missions right now, resiliency is very high on the list. So I'd like to continue that conversation and see what can be done. And, and if that means what happens at Big Rock needs to happen other places, then it needs to happen other places. It's, seems like, you know, it's, it's a matter of money, I think, like most things. I think that's the main component. So let's keep talking about that. Paul Grisanti, thank you for sharing your new voter experience. That's the official name of the program. Yeah, I haven't gone to vote yet, but hopefully the kinks have been worked out. Christopher Karadine, ocean pumps and underground power. You get my vote on that. Again, that's a giant money issue, at least the undergrounding. But it seems like if it can be done in all these other places, it could be done here. Let's see. So just a little bit about the last couple of weeks. As the mayor pro tem said, we, a contingent, a contingent of us went to, we started at the Laguna Beach City Hall and that was Susan, our Public Safety Commission Chair, some community members. And we were met there in their city hall by the mayor, the city manager, two of their law enforcement personnel. They have their own police department there and several other staff members and the executive director of the facility operator, that group is called Friendship House. And we went to learn about what they refer to as their alternative sleeping location. That language is lifted directly out of the Martin versus Boise decision. So I think that was a good way for them to phrase it. We learned about a lot of things. We asked them what they were doing about RVs. They passed a parking ordinance before the Coastal Act was passed in 1976. An option that may not be open to us. Yeah, so that was interesting to learn, but they incorporated it as a city in 1927. We weren't incorporated in 1976, as you already know. One thing I'll say about the going to city hall and going to their shelter, we stand to benefit in a gigantic way from what they've been doing for 10 years. We can utilize their experience as we move forward. Their experience includes two lawsuits from the ACLU. We hope not to repeat those things and again, benefit from their experience. They were incredibly generous with their time and information with us. And the very next morning, we had a meeting with the homeless working group to talk about what we learned in Laguna and how we can begin to move forward here on the two programs we've identified already. A safe parking program, it's not a parking lot, and some kind of a homeless shelter. I was unable to, to attend either of the sessions of the Community Wildfire Protection Plan Workshop, but I want to thank Jerry for running those. And I want to encourage everybody to please go to the city website and fill out the online survey. I believe it's called the Wildfire Plan Survey. Yes, and how much more time do people have to go and do that survey? Two months? Oh, awesome. Okay, no excuses, everybody, please. Takes 10 minutes. Please fill that survey out. The Sustainability Summit that the mayor pro tem and I attended was put on by the USC Saul Price School of Public Policy. These, this was an incredibly dense and valuable presentation that we listened to on Friday afternoon or participated in on Saturday all day. It included university professors, including the department head of urban planning at the USC Price School, Senator Ben Allen, a longtime council member from another LA County coastal city. She's from Rolling Hills Estates. She also serves on the California Air Resources Board and the SoCal AQMD. So all, all of this presentation is, is, I will say, a ton of information. Not exactly a roadmap for us to follow, but a lot of ideas for us to chart our own course. So that burden is on us and I look forward to going to work on that. And we also had presentations from a group in downtown LA called Climate Resolve and Edison. So again, that's all about resiliency and trying to move ahead in the context of climate change. And, you know, we got, we got a huge lesson in environmental leadership, environmental economics, sustainability, climate preparedness planning, local hazard mitigation plans, reduction of greenhouse gases and other waste, adaptability, emergency operations management. And it was really, really worth our time and I just, I want to thank the city for, for sending us to that. And then today, I took part in a meeting in downtown LA with representatives from all the other cog cities and I will just name them. For anyone who's not sure, it's Agoura Hills, Calabasas, Westlake Village, Hidden Hills and ourselves. It's called the Los Virginas Malibu Cog. There were also representatives from the Third and Fifth Supervisory Districts. That's Sheila Kuehl and Catherine Barger, along with the Executive Director of California Contract Cities. And we met with our Los Angeles County Sheriff and some other high-level sheriffs, deputies. So I do want to point out that the Los Virginas Malibu Cog has called a special meeting. It was properly noticed last week. And if you hadn't seen it, it's tomorrow morning at 8:30. And the cog meets these days at Agoura City Hall. That meeting is open to the public. Okay, that's it for my report. And now, sorry to the kids who've had to wait so long. We are going to put item 5A ahead of the consent calendar and everything else here. And we'll be moving ahead with 5A when our younger constituents come back in the room. Excuse me, we'll have a staff report. Should we wait for the kids? Yeah, let's do that. Okay, Jesse, I guess, go ahead. Thank you.
Good evening Mayor Fair, members of the city council. The item before you tonight is the final design for our temporary skate park project. You can see the basic layout of the temporary skate park property here. And maybe louder and get this a little closer. There we go. So you can see the overview of the property here with the temporary skate park on the west side, the drop-off pickup area in the middle of the property and then temporary parking on the west. I'm sorry, as you move east. The area in the yellow will be available in July 2020. Once our lease with the developer of the case project ends, we'll have that property back. So that's pretty quick and our plan would be, is to develop a permanent skate park on that side of the property where it shows the yellow and potentially into where the temporary parking is. So it's a little tough to see and I'm happy to zoom in or answer questions on this. But this is the detailed plan for the project, which includes the temporary skate park, which is 12,320 square feet, an 11,856 square foot drop-off and pickup area. And then the area for parking is actually the surface that's in place there. And we'll be able to hold a minimum of 40 cars. So that's a pretty big piece, but 40 is a little bit more than what we needed. But there's definitely space for 40 cars there and those will be online spaces. So just the area is there for, for parking for those cars. And this is the, the plan that the Planning Commission saw and approved as it's shown here in the layout. So I want to quickly go through the public input process. It's not a secret at this point. This was a very, very quick process for getting even to this stage and how quickly we've done it. So I know that the council has seen some of these items, but first we had the community survey in October of 2019. We had 219 We had 219 responses to that, and 166 of those responses were from Malibu, unincorporated Malibu or the Topanga area. So we got a lot of local input on that, which was great. I'll touch base on some of the things that were in the survey on my next slide. And just wanted to tell you about the overall process on this slide. So the next, you'll see, we had a public design meeting on January 22nd. And what that was, we had American Ramp Company come to city hall and present three conceptual designs that they had worked up based on the feedback from the community survey and various meetings, like city council meetings and commissions and things like that. And that feedback was used, was presented in the meeting, and then they used the feedback from the 40 attendees that were there to prepare a preliminary conceptual design, which is kind of a draft conceptual design for us to take to the commissions to discuss with them before bringing it here. So the youth commission reviewed it on February 10th, and the Parks and Recreation Commission reviewed it on February 18th. Both had overall support for the project and as it was presented and was in favor of bringing this proposal to council as it was. So and then finally, the council knows this. But the council has also seen, obviously not to this extent, but has seen the project a couple of times as it's come forward in November and as we brought through other things like the agreement for the temporary design and stuff like that. So real quick, the temporary skate park survey, I know that the council has seen this previously, but the big things to hit on here, that the preferences from the public were a wood concrete and a skate light surface versus a steel frame temporary skate park, and that the public preferred a mini bowl instead of a mini ramp as the main feature for the skate park. We did ask other questions related to the maintenance costs or how much maintenance there would be, the cost of equipment and the ability to resell the equipment. And you can see the averages on a 1 to 5 weighted average there. And while the low maintenance was the highest item, none of those items were super high, like we might expect it to be a four over based on some of the things we put out there. So that just talks a little bit about that. And then based on the feedback that we received from that public design meeting and the conceptual designs, this is the conceptual design that was in the staff report to city council this evening. You can see it features the mini bowl, which is there on the northeast corner of the project. That whole conglomerate of things is called the plaza or a plaza. You can see a fun box in the middle, as well as the quarter pipe here on the west side of the property and then other areas for more beginning skaters to use. And that was one of the things they got from the public design meetings. They really wanted to make sure that they had a course that was functional for intermediate and advanced skaters, as well as beginning skaters, which is why you see that divide there. The transition style and the higher ramps here on this side are a little bit more advanced. And then you'll see more of the beginning elements here on the south side of the project. So one thing to note is that this, the highest point of this park is this railing right here, and it's seven and a half feet. So that means the deck and everything else, there's no deck skating area higher than four and a half feet in the skate park. So I know one of the things mentioned in the staff report was updated cost estimates for the project. As the projects developed and we've heard the public feedback and seen some of the designs come back, we wanted to update the council with a projection on what we think the costs will be. You can see that the asphalt surface and fencing takes up a pretty big chunk of the $300,000 that the council had originally allocated for this project. Other items, the construction of the skate elements, which is just the actual equipment and the building of the equipment would be $150,000 to $180,000. And then side accessories like benches, chairs, tables, things like that. We've put another $20,000 in there. So the total approximate cost goes up to $450,000 to $480,000 for the project. One thing to note for this is that our calculation is that three, a little over $300,000, $310,000 of the material costs will actually be reused in the permanent skate park, like the asphalt, the fencing. And if we even get a very modest return of 20% on reselling the equipment, if that was an option we chose, we think that we would get, we would have 65% of the cost of that $480,000, which is on the high end, would be reused for the permanent skate park. So that's how we've looked at it from this perspective. It is more expensive, but they are costs that we would have to spend for the permanent skate park in some way, shape, or form. So these are the deadlines for the temporary skate park as we stand today. Our bids for the asphalt surface and fencing, construction bids close on March 10th. And it's a very fluid process where our process will be to lay down the asphalt, get that in, and continue some of the other additional work with that, and then start building a temporary skate park in a separate bid after that. So the timeframe is super tight, we know that, it's been the case. So we've been working very hard to keep on that schedule. The equipment, I mentioned, we mentioned the build for that. We would release as soon as possible if the council approves that final design tonight. The asphalt installation is expected to begin in mid-April 2020 with the temporary skate park equipment installation beginning just a couple of weeks after that. So you can see why the timeframe's been so tight there. With the temporary skate park still expected to open in late May. So we're excited about that. One thing I did note in the staff report is that we did receive, it details the requests from the developer of the case project, who is, they're building the complex that is adjacent to the temporary skate park and where the permanent skate park would be. They did have several requests, we met with them and tried to get in front of those requests and touch base on those things. If the council wants to hear those, I'm happy to get into the details of the specific requests. And I can do that maybe after public comments, I know there's a lot of that. I'm happy to answer any questions with that, and we expected those questions considering they were in the staff report. The last thing I want to say, I put this photo here as a thank you to some of the people that have been involved in this process. And I want to start by saying I could probably sit here for an hour and say thank you to the different people that have been involved. A lot of the youth that have been involved in just the design process, a lot of them are sitting over there. I want to say thank you to them, especially Finn Murphy, who probably, he sat on our interview process for the permanent skate park design, which you'll see under our consent calendar tonight. But I think that was punishment enough, and he's also been in attendance at all the meetings. So sitting in those interviews all day was rough for anybody. But a special thanks to all the youth that are here. I think to be here at every meeting has been a really, really big deal. Even the meetings that seemed like they weren't as dire or critical, they were at. So that's been really great. A couple of parents that I know are here, Jody Gorson, Lauren Polito, Diana Mitchell, Paula Murphy, Hamish Patterson, and Heather Gardner. Thank you so much for all of your work and your help. It's been a ton, and I sincerely appreciate that. It's made this project, even though it's been very hectic, very helpful. Lastly, some of our commissioners, Judy, Suzanne, Josh Spiegel, who I think is here as well, for their assistance on some of our panels. And then James Fisher from our youth commission was also integral in that. So along with some of our city staff, the Planning Department of Public Works, they, there are some specific people, and like I said, there's, I could probably name 10 people from city hall that have been integral in this. But Jorge Rubocaba, Jessica Thompson, and Kristen Riesgo have gone out of their way, even during a really, really busy time here at the city, to make this a priority. And that was really, really difficult on them. So I want to say thank you. Happy to answer any questions you have.
Okay, thank you, Jesse. Anybody have questions?
Yeah, I was just going to say that the only sort of, I mean, I think there's support for the skate park, we can safely say. But the only contentious issue about this is the request from the developer about changing it. Maybe it's a good idea to hear what those are now before all the public commentary, because I think that everybody's talked to them, and I'm curious from the public speakers what their feelings are on that. And what, any consensus for that from the council?
I support that.
Okay, anybody else?
So that is to hear public speaking and then deliberate?
No, to hear from Jesse what the recommendations or requests are from the developer about modifications so that the public speakers can kind of weigh in on their thoughts on that.
Seems reasonable.
So to touch base on some of the big changes or the big requests that were brought forward by the developer, we did meet, oh gosh, at least four times. I know we met once onsite, we met two or three times here at city hall. So we have had a lot of dialogue back and forth with them. And I don't know if they're here, but they have been willing to sit down and discuss with us. And we're in agreeance on a lot of things that are not detrimental to the temporary skate park. There's a couple of items that we just simply don't agree. And I think we wanted to bring that to council just for issues of transparency. We got to a point where we thought the minor changes were something that were explainable to us in a staff report or in a presentation. I think as the changes kept going and going, we just wanted to bring it to you. So that's the reason for that, if you're curious. The big changes to note are, I'll go through them one at a time and actually put them up on the screen. But the first one is the west quarter pipe, which is this here. And I hope you can see my pointer. But the quarter pipe over there on the west side is, they've asked that we move that in approximately 35 feet. And the reason for that is the wall, which is not super representative here in this conceptual design, but the wall actually tapers down as it goes over to that side of the property. So this is on a part of the property where the wall is relatively low in comparison to where, I don't know if it's that the dirt's built up to the, you know, a little bit higher than grade. And so this would show in the entrance coming in there. So that's the first request they had was to shift that more in line with the 65-foot setback that is in effect for their property, but not necessarily, not for this parcel. Not necessarily, it is not something that's in effect for this parcel. The second change is the installation of 210 feet of hedges that are at least eight feet in height. And the reason for that would be, and you can see on the green line there is to L around that piece, even after we've moved it in, and would be to a point of eight feet high where it would hopefully block some of the kids or the skaters that are actually up on the top of that and would block the railing that's there in some way, shape, or form. So that would be placed from the very start point over there on the edge all the way around the north side of the wall. The third change, in fairness, some of this we would have installed on our own. We would have put some chain link fencing on that short side there to prevent access to the skate park on both of the west and the east end, and then potentially on the south. We wouldn't necessarily have put it along the concrete wall, which they requested that we put it the entire length of the property, which is 565 feet, if you follow that roughly. That's to protect their wall that's in place. And so we think that that's something that's relatively reasonable. If you have cars in the parking area, you wouldn't necessarily want them hitting the wall. And I can definitely understand the need for wanting that potentially along the concrete wall that's there. I think one of the reasons or one of the issues we had was hedges and a fence. That seems like kind of dual effort there. If we have a fencing, fencing and then hedges between that, it's hard to maintain, and it's kind of a dual-purpose thing. So and then what that would do with the fencing, with that chain link fencing, one other note I should have is that right now, the fencing that's out there is two feet away from that concrete wall, which we thought was relatively acceptable with the temporary skate park going in there in the asphalt. They have asked for that to be a minimum of four feet away from the wall, which would actually shift the equipment and the asphalt a little bit further than our original plan was. So what happened with that is it just condenses the size of the skate park. And so it takes the 12,320 square feet of the skate park and reduces it down to 10,820. That's a very, that's a very modest estimate. It's probably a little bit more, but I'm trying to be fair overall in how much it will specifically go down. In addition to that, they had asked that we irrigate the property itself, the actual, the hedges and things like that. But we do not have irrigation on the property currently. And then if we were to try and go back and get an amendment to our CDP, which was approved by the Planning Commission, that's what it would require for us to put those in permanently, which I think is not something we were super comfortable with either. So this is the reduced conceptual design, where you can see we took the centerpiece that was right here out, the fun box, and basically condensed the skate park in. It does not show the equipment brought off the wall, which would reduce it a little bit further. But the skate park, the reduced skate park itself would be safe. Our designer would not, wouldn't design us a skate park that was not safe. But it will reduce the flow of the park a little bit in that large, open area there, which is something that was intentionally put there. So that's a majority of the changes they requested in a nutshell. I put them here as, those are the ones that really affect the size of the skate park. The skate park would still be skatable, it would not be quite as good. Those are decisions we wanted to bring to council to hear feedback on, so.
I appreciate that. And does that add any costs to the numbers you threw out earlier? Or is it just modifying the, you know, the thing?
We would probably, our plan would be to keep the asphalt the same size, because we would plan to use that for parking at some point in the future. So we wouldn't reduce the size of the asphalt necessarily. We would keep that, because we would put benches and chairs and things like that on that backside. It may reduce the equipment costs a touch, because we would take that center fun box out of it, which is that middle piece that was shown in the original design. So no, I don't.
So no major increase to the cost?
If the council were to say, hey, we're going to put in every change that was requested, you know, things like permanent irrigation, there would be some costs there. There'd be some small maintenance costs, things like that, in the temporary, in the temporary side of things. But it would also be long-term costs if we were to go back and get an amendment and do a permanent one.
All right, I appreciate that. Thank you.
Okay, and Jesse, I have a question. In the absence of permanent irrigation, we'd be looking at manually watering?
That's correct. We would find our nearest connection over at Bluffs Park and either drag a hose across or bring in a potable water truck and have them handwater it that way. It would depend on what would be easiest for our contractor. But our landscape maintenance contractor would probably assume those duties, assuming they weren't too crazy.
Okay, and there would be adequate space to get a person or something in there to get the water to them?
Maybe. That's, yeah, that's the difficult, that's the difficult thing. So if we put the chain link fencing four feet away from that concrete, existing concrete wall that's there, and then we put two-foot boxes with hedges, there'd be some maintenance concerns with us, you know, trying to squeeze in there and trim them, keep it off the skate park, which would be our real concern, is the leaves or things like that dropping actually onto the skate park and causing a skate hazard. It's doable, we'll find a way. It would be a pain, but it's doable.
Okay, thank you. And then one last question. If the, I think it's 210 feet of some kind of a green screen, how many boxes do you think that is? I don't know how far apart they're spaced.
Safely, if we were to do four or five feet, we'd be looking at 40, 40 hedges, trees. And I guess that would depend on what species we picked and making sure. The reason for the two-foot boxes is, number one, to make it temporary. It's not a permanent solution, which we would not be comfortable doing without going back for an amendment on the CDP. So it'd be two-foot boxes, and that would also elevate whatever plant we could get, whether that be a tree or a hedge, and that would help elevate it to that eight-foot height, which would be a couple of feet higher than the wall at grade, but would also cover the railing so that, and hopefully, most of the kids that are up there, you might see a head pop over. But I think there's lots of concerns on there and security, wanting to make sure that people can't access their wall. Our concerns were, we think we can do that with a more limited space, with either hedges or a fence, not both, right along that wall. So in fairness, the 210 feet does incorporate the fence along the west side and all the way along that wall. In all transparency, we probably would have put this fencing in ourselves regardless right here. So it's probably more like 175 feet of fencing that they're asking for within the temporary skate park itself.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else, any questions?
Mayor Karen, thank you. I saw Scott earlier over pizza. I know I saw Robert Gold here. Had anybody considered the fact that leaving the fence there was okay for some of us because of the possibility of tagging and access to the wall? What about asking Scott to put this green wall on his side where there's already adequate watering? Because I was there today, and I saw that you did need a fence and you did need a green wall. The devices would show up, and he's got to sell some very expensive properties there that we need the resource money from as tax base. And I understand his perspective. But in fairness, you might think, green wall on his side, he maintains it and takes care of it. And then when the permanent park is done, he can do what he wants with it. He sells his properties between then and now, and he's got his wall, and then he's got his fence.
So let me touch on the fence first. Yes, the concern about tagging and people having direct access to the wall is one of the primary reasons for that fencing, especially in the temporary skate park. is one of the primary reasons for that fencing, especially in the temporary skate park area. So the design standards and, and the setbacks and all of that for, for our parcel, as well as the case development as a whole, each individual lot has different, has different standards inside development. So we did discuss those items of potentially putting the hedges on their side or the trees on their side. And I, one thing I forgot to mention a few minutes ago is that they did offer to pay for the hedges. The hedges or trees that we place, whether they're on our side or not, they would, they would pay for those. It would require them to go back and probably amend their permits for that side of the property. It's a little bit different for our side because our side in the L, in the LIP is written very, I don't want to say vague because it's not vague to be confusing. It's vague because the intention very clearly was to put a skate park or ball fields there with, with parking. So our standards, it just says the setback is basically what we need for the site. There's not specific standards for that, and I think that it would be an easier process to put them on our side versus his side. And that conversation did happen. It was just something where I think they were not comfortable with them going on their side. But they did offer to pay for them.
Guess that's why we're going to listen to the public.
Okay. Thank you, Jesse. All right. Time for public comments, and I will do what I've been doing, call people three at a time. And if you could please try to come up close to the front so we don't lose time in between speakers. The first, oh, and I must say also, at this time, we will not be taking any other public speaker comments on item five A. Our first public speaker is Hamish Patterson, followed by John Maza, followed by Scott Gillen.
I see you've got your walking extra minute.
I do, I do. He's, he's ready to roll. Good evening, mayor, council members. As a person who's Jefferson and Skylar and Reba know, you know, I've been down here for about nine years trying to get a skate park built in Malibu. And, and to young bucks there, as I know, it seems like we're losing something, but I'll tell you, there's nothing more disappointing than actually like getting close to having a skate park and losing and it going silent for almost five years. And so I think the community and all of us after the fire picked a target we could all get done and rebuild our community with, and it was the skate park. And so there's been a real compressed timeline, and I don't think a lot of people understand the minutia of, of City Hall. And we've gotten a real gift here with how compressed everything's been and how generous everybody's been with their time and resources here. And so as we move through this process, there's been moments where, yeah, like I missed a meeting due to obligations, there's, we're moving quick, so things are happening. And I want to speak on, and this for everyone who knows me, I'm going to speak on the behalf of Robert and Scott, developers, and I'm an anti-development guy, a slow growther. So I, I want that to carry a little bit of weight here as I'm going to speak on their behalf because I was at the planning commission meeting where it was again a rushed thing coming right out of the design process, very quick how it happened, and they submitted their complaints with it via letter. They didn't have to show up. They maintained certain rights as the neighbors, and they could have easily not shown up. They could have easily objected to what we've done, launched an appeal, which would have derailed our whole process, where we would not be looking at an opening date here and at the end of May. We would have been kicked down the, into oblivion from my perspective. So taking a chance, as, as, as one man to another, I reached across, I reached across to Scott. I've known Robert in this struggle since 2014, and I was in opposition to him about the, the development, which was the Crummer property. And I reached across and I, and I talked to Scott, and I said, hey, can we get it, can we get a cup of coffee? Can we talk? And, and there's, I think there's a misconception that there was some sort of bullying going on on the behalf of, of Scott and Robert. And, and there was not any bullying. They have been nothing but, but generous and courteous, and there's been no threatening of, of us. They've been, addressed their concerns in this compressed timeframe, and they did, they've put their skin on the line by saying they would not appeal this process. So they've given something that I don't think we really understand because it, it's sort of esoteric, but they've given us something and, and, and kind of we've all agreed, we want a permanent skate park, and that is our goal, is the permanent skate park. And if we burn these guys right now, that's not good. Is my time up? I didn't see a timer. But I just want to say is like, let's get this moving. Scott and Robert have been awesome. You guys got to understand, I know, I know. So thank you.
Thanks. Should have gotten that extra minute. Okay. Our next speaker is John Maza, followed by Scott Gillen, followed by Robert Gold.
Greetings. This, this project was granted to CDP by the planning commission. And we considered Scott Gillen's requests, and for various reasons, we did not pass them. But we did consider them. And part of the reason, at least in my mind, was that there's a CDP on this whole project, this whole, what's called the Crummer property. That has to be amended, okay? And we've given a CDP on this particular design. That needs to be amended because it's in effect. So you want to, you want to stall this project, change it, okay? And I think it's very, very important that we don't take twelve to thirteen percent away from this project for a hedge. It's, it's the kids who want the skate park. They want that thing in the middle, whatever it's called, a play pool or whatever it is. And fun box, okay? They want that. They want a twelve-thousand-eight, a five-hundred-square-foot project. And remember, this is a two-year deal, okay? It's all moving, okay? And this is also a one-foot-thick wall that's eight feet high. You can't hurt it, especially from the inside. But I think that's the overall thing to look at. There was, there were objections to additional trees, and these were proposed to be trees by Malibu Country Estates and the cemetery when the original CDP was given. And I don't believe they've been notified. I mean, this is not exactly in the radar so, of those type of people. So you have to consider, do you want to do this? Do you want to get it done in time and hope it doesn't rain in April? Or do you want to mess around with it and go back and get CDP amendments? And we've got short-term rentals and especially dwelling units coming the next two meetings. You can't squeeze it in because we've got thirteen other projects in one meeting. So I hope you consider that. Remember this, we got about a half of one percent from the, the selling price of this project, when Scott sells it all out, at three-hundred-million dollars is what's the advertised prices or more. And so this is not, this is something that we got, we negotiated, we got a big CDP for it, we went to Coastal Commission, it got approved, it was a big deal. And this, and we paid for it, okay? Because we got a tiny little sliver. Thank you.
The next three speakers are Scott Gillen, Robert Gold, and Judy Villablanca.
Thank you. I'm, I'm not even really sure where to start or respond, so John Maza didn't tell you that I'm putting in a five-million-dollar water line to advance the water from the Hughes Research Laboratory down to the PCH. Jamie didn't really depict the skate park in the public's eye as it's going to be. The wall is still represented at six feet, which it's not. It's forty-two inches. He forgot to tell you that I was going to pay for the planting. We didn't ask for big changes. I asked for simple changes, just some privacy concerns and noise concerns and some hedges. I don't know who said I wouldn't water them. We didn't think we could water them. They're not on my property. Happy to water them. I've lived for thirty-two years. I'm amazed at the unfairness of what's going on. These people don't know that I gave you that property. They don't know that I gave you a million dollars, to put it. They don't know that I was well aware that the park was coming. I bought this property knowing the park was studied and approved. And they're also unaware that what you're putting in and calling temporary is not what was studied, is not what was approved. And I still did not oppose it and/or appeal it. I think I've been fair. I'm asking for some fairness in return. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Robert Gold, followed by Judy Villablanca, followed by Finn Murphy.
Good evening, mayor and council members. Obviously, you could hear the frustration in Scott's voice. First, you know, I'd like to thank everybody on the council who were able to come out to the property. Director Bonnie Blue is not here, Jesse and Christian, who came out to the property, to hear Scott's thoughts about the temporary skate park. And also like to thank the city manager, Hamish, Judy, and some of the other parents who we've met with, and talk to us about our concerns and their concerns. You know, I hope through these meetings and Scott's actions, that it's clear that Scott is not trying to delay the completion of the park. As Hamish said, if he wanted to, he could have done so, and he didn't. I also hope that these conversations have cleared up some of the misunderstandings that were out there, and I wish these conversations took place sooner, and for that, I take some responsibility. In order to minimize potential noise and visual impact, Scott is asking for a few minor design changes, which I've been told will not affect the flow of the park. With respect to the plantings being on the city's portion of the, of the property, again, that's an issue with respect to the plan, the landscape plan that was approved as part of the CDP. We believe that the requested changes are reasonable, and as been pointed out, Scott would be paying for those changes. We respectfully request that the council approves the skate park design with the modifications requested by Scott, and let's get these kids and their families a skate park that they deserve. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Judy Villablanca, followed by Finn Murphy, followed by Axel Palito.
Thank you. I think as everybody here knows, I've been a big pusher of getting a skate park done. I guess there's several issues that I would keep in mind and for you guys to resolve this. One is that the major goal is the permanent park, and I think for the kids, I want you to think about the major goal is the permanent park. You know, whenever you've got two groups working together, if one side gets everything they want, I think that means you're not listening. So I, I feel like there is some room for compromise. And to steal a quote from my good friend Susan Gouldeman, "Perfect is the enemy of good." So I, I personally would be okay with doing some of these changes that the case property has requested. I think the kids are going to get a place to skate where no one's going to chase them out. They're not going to get yelled at. They get a skateboard, which we don't have anywhere in Malibu. And we have the contract up for the permanent park also, which I hope the council will approve tonight. I know, I, I was at the interviews for that, and I know whoever gets picked to build the temporary park, they will skate the park, they can adjust the flow as needed. I don't, I mean, you'll have to correct me through planning, but I wouldn't think just adjusting some of the equipment, that doesn't shake a CDP because this stuff is not, you know, like planted. And you probably, again, not that I'm a skater, but you could probably put a smaller fun box in that open area to kind of, you know, cut the flow, and so you kind of keep the younger skaters maybe away from more expert ones. And Finn, I hope you'll comment on that. In terms of the hedge and the fence, I personally would vote for just a hedge because I think if you put a chain link fence even for what Scott and Robert want, that's very easy to climb, and then you can hop onto your wall. So I don't, and it would make it very hard to take care of a hedge. I'd like to see the hedge be, again, my, I'm not a development person, I'm a, you know, a native habitat person, so I'd love to see it be a native plant, provide some habitat. It actually would make the skate park look nicer because it would kind of soften that whole big wall. The hedge could protect it from graffiti. It's kind of hard to paint through a hedge. We could, somebody suggested at Parks and Rec, we could put like a curb maybe about this high inside the hedge because that would top, stop a board from, you know, going off into the wall, and the skaters couldn't go into that area because there would be asphalt. And I thought that was a really good idea. Might, I think might have been Josh maybe who mentioned that. So I think there's ways to work around this, and I, again, I didn't think this would take a new CDP for the changes that are being asked. I'd like to see this done so kids can be skating in May and we get onto the permanent park. And I'll let Finn, who always, and all you guys speak much more eloquently than I, but we're coming from getting you what you want, which is a skate park, okay?
Thank you. Okay. The next three speakers are Finn Murphy, then Axel Palito, then Sky Parker.
Hello, my name is Finn Murphy. I'm happy to be able to speak here tonight. Some of these things that the developers have asked for are not very good for us skaters. For example, the trees and hedges he's asked for will, leaves and nuts will fall, will fall on the skate park, creating a safety hazard for everyone using the park because if you're flying by at a high speed and you hit a nut, you're getting, it doesn't feel good. I can say that from experience. Yeah. And also moving the western quarter pipe would take away the fun box in the middle of the park, which is also a safety hazard, believe it or not, because that'll take away the flow a lot and the skateability of the park. Some skaters will see this as an area to practice flat ground, and they will only be looking down at their board and not for other skaters trying to use the park. I've seen this so many times where skaters will be in the middle of the park and getting run into and getting hurt and, or blocking everyone else. I've seen kids and adults get very hurt from this, and it's happened to me before on both sides of the crash. And it either hurts really bad to be smashed into by a skater going ten to fifteen miles an hour, or you feel really bad because you hit a little kid coming out from the wall because he didn't look. And then you feel guilty for the rest of the session and you aren't focused, and that makes you fall. And also the fun box is a key part, is a key place to get speed and to learn tricks. Me and my friends always loved them and learned so many tricks on them to, before we take them to like bigger stuff. Also, I'd like to note that the development will probably not be built until the last year the temp park and will not probably be sold until the temp park is gone. And I am going to say, please vote for the twelve-thousand-three, three-hundred-and-twenty-foot square park as originally designed with the fun box. And these are big changes that they're going to make. And also, I would say not, with all respect to Mr. Gillen, I, I can kind of tell that you gave these things not out of the kindness of your heart, but so you could get what you wanted and so you could build those mansions. And even a twelve-year-old can see that, so. I know two years might not be long for you, but for kids, twel, two years is huge. I would love and would really appreciate if you guys would consider some of this before you allow these things to happen to our park. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Axel Palito, followed by Sky Parker, followed by Leila Palito.
My name is Axel Palito. I'm going to keep this short and positive, like me, short and positive. So thank you, town council, for being so good to your Graham citizens and giving us a skate park. And a huge thanks to Jesse, who worked so hard on this. Dude, you rock. And thank you in advance to Mr. Gillen and Mr. Gold for not causing any problems with our permanent park. And a big thank you for the million dollars that helped fund our skate park. Thank you.
Thank you, Axel. Our next speaker is Sky Parker, followed by Leila Palito, followed by Allegra and Kane.
I have been coming to these meetings since I was three years old. I am now almost nine. I am very excited to skate in my hometown of Malibu. Thank you for making this happen.
Thank you, Sky. Okay. Next is Leila Palito, followed by Allegra and Kane. And next is, uh-oh, sorry. Okay, next is Leila Palito, followed by Allegra and Kane, and next is, uh-oh, sorry, someone whose last name is Cockrell. Thurston, excuse me, thank you.
First, I'd like to thank Mr. Gillan and Mr. Gold for not filing an appeal. That was pretty cool of you. I would, however, like to address the remarks made in the last town council meeting about the bad reputation associated with skaters, which ended with, "No offense, kids." With all due respect, the opinion is dated and unfounded. I, for example, am two years ahead of math and have straight A's. My little brother Axel is representing Malibu in a competition next month in math and gets bus to Santa Monica to perform in honors viola. Max Gerson, also a great student, just petitioned for and succeeded in creating Malibu High's lacrosse team. Talia Swindle, also a straight A honors student, is a state champion in surfing. That's just a sampling of the group. You would find that all of them are good students, have many accolades, and have been well-raised, and all these kids, with maybe the exception of Gage, know how to show adults proper respect. As for the concerns about people scaling the wall to your spec homes, we have worked this hard to get the skate park done. It's not so we can go into yards of people we don't know, it's so we can skate on the ramps. And who knows, with the people Malibu attracts, the skate park could attract more money for your homes. As developers, your reputation precedes you as well, but I will keep an open mind and have asked you, and I have asked you to, and hope that you will stay true to your words and not mess with the permanent park. Losing the fun box because of your recent request is a serious bummer to us. But here's an idea: you paid $50 million for 24 acres of prime real estate in Malibu. That's roughly $48 a square foot. We are losing 1,500 square feet of our park. That is $72,000 in equivalent value. The city is short $200,000 on the permanent park. Maybe you could donate that $72,000 towards the gap, and we call it a day. We're just kids, but as I mentioned, we're smart, motivated, and accomplished kids. Maybe future unvarnished customers. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is, okay, next is Allegra and Kane, followed by Thurston Cockrell, followed by Max Gerson. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, City of Malibu, for understanding how vital the skate park is for kids our age, and how important it is to have a place where we can gather and learn an important sport like skateboarding. Please don't do a reduction on the size of the skate park. And Mr. Gillan, maybe when I make my first $100 million, I'll buy one of your houses and my kids will go to the skate park. Shred on, bros.
Thank you. Okay, our next speaker is Thurston Cockrell. You ready, guys? Next is Max Gerson after Thurston, and then Trevor Oliver. Okay, Thurston, you ready?
I need to get out this list, my bad. All right. Hi, my name is Deshna Sean, thank you so much, all the kids are stoked for the temporary skate park at least. I just want to say, thank you, um, thank you so much. I agree with all of our stuff on having a skate park, and I really appreciate it. I'm very stoked. I'm super stoked, I can't wait for all these items and the ground that we'll have in the skate park. I really appreciate it, but unfortunately, we have to say goodbye to the fun box, even though I really wanted it, but it's okay. Thank you. And I just want to say, like, a lot of people might complain, and I don't know, you can say like whatever you want, but if you're gonna complain, like, because we're like skating somewhere at like rows, or like we, our board falls and like hits your feet, and you get like mad because you're old, and you have nothing like else better to complain about, um, I just want to say, like, you guys might keep on complaining and be like, "No, we don't want to have a skate park," but like, if you don't want your feet to get hurt and you don't want to keep on complaining, like, we might as well have a skate park. And the skate park isn't meant for you guys, it's meant for us, because like, all we want to do is have a skate park, and I don't think any of y'all understand, so thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next is Max Gerson, followed by, excuse me, one second. After Max is Trevor Oliver. Trevor, can you hear me? You're next. Followed by Heather Gardner. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Max Gerson, and I'm a freshman at Malibu High School. I don't want the skate park to be any smaller than it already is, but if that, if that's what it takes for us to get a skate park soon, then, I mean, that's fine, but I feel like we've waited so long, and we need a skate park, like, soon. So thank you, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next is Trevor Oliver, followed by Heather Gardner.
Hi, my name is Trevor Oliver, and we have been looking forward to a skate park for years, and it would mean the world to us. There would be many pros and inspiring skaters coming to the park. The skate park would inspire many people of all age to the skate, to the skating world. Parents have to drive very long to get to a good skate park such as Venice, which is 35 minutes away. The skate parks are far away, and we can't go there as much as we would like because it is far, and my friends and their parents can agree. After school, we could all go skate at our skate park rather than skating at Vintage and Walter getting mad. Thank you guys so much for making this happen and getting this this far. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, the next speaker is Heather Gardner.
Here we are again. Good times, though. I just want to thank everyone for coming out tonight, all the kids. It's been a loud crowd, but we're very thankful that you're here, and want to thank Jesse, especially, for all the hard work that he's been doing. We literally have been going to meetings once a week for this last month, so it's been pretty intense, but amazing. I also want to thank Scott and Robert for taking the time to come and meet with some of us before this meeting tonight. We all came at 5:30 and had some pizza, and we all were able to express some concerns and be real with each other, and that was very valuable. One of the things that I do think is that with what we need to think about and focus on is the long haul with the permanent, if any of these changes are gonna keep the permanent, push it over and make the permanent be farther down the road or the temporary, then we need to consider that. But I don't think this should all be over a fun box, because really, a fun box you can set up anywhere, and it's not worth losing a temporary park for a fun box. We don't want to delay a temporary in order to do that, so I think you guys can make the wise decision on how to handle that based on what everyone has said, but I know that the kids would rather have a temporary than not, or would rather have a temporary in May than in a year from now. So all those things considered, one of the things that Scott had mentioned that I think is interesting regarding the wall and regarding the fencing, is that he had mentioned that he's not super concerned with what happens on this side of the wall, of what he's not seeing on his side, unless it's a break or something, then he's concerned. So I'm not sure if the chain link fence is necessary unless it's keeping out whatever the hedge system is from falling onto the skate park. So we also talked about how strong that wall is and how thick it is, and if a skateboard was actually hit against that wall, it's most likely the skateboard would break and not the wall. So those things to consider, you know, because it is a pretty thick wall. So anyway. Also, how much time do I have? I don't see a timer anywhere. Oh, here we go, 40 seconds. One thing that we also addressed, and this is regarding, I think one of the reasons why there's so much disappointment that you hear in the voices of the kids, is because they came to a meeting where we sat with the designers, and they were able to really have a voice. And the designers created this design for the temporary park based on that voice that they shared. And then to have to come again to hear, "Oh, well, we're taking this away." That isn't, you know, that's the process that I think that they're speaking from, from that voice of like disappointment of like, "This is what we created, and now we have to change it." We talked about in the future making sure that they're at the design meeting, these guys are at the design meeting for the permanent park, so this doesn't happen again. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, that concludes public comments. Thanks to everyone. So I would assume we have some council comments. Who'd like to go first?
I'll be happy to go if nobody else is jumping at the bit. Oh, excuse me.
I don't want to start first, but just full disclosure, I met with Scott and Robert over the weekend at the site, and I just wanted to put that out there. I didn't learn anything new that you can't see from visiting the site and seeing it from the road.
I don't know if we have to say that or not, but I did also, and I appreciate you making the time for me, gentlemen, and I always want to see things, I read the staff report in detail, and I always want to see things from the standpoint of everyone involved. So I talked to them, I, you know, I read it, I looked at it, and once I got to ground level in, at the entrance of their development, I could understand their concerns, and I, so I could see that was, was good. But as I told them, I encouraged them to reach out to those who are passionate about the park in particular. Judy Villablanca, who's my Parks and Rec Commissioner, who has probably been primarily responsible for fast-tracking this project for everybody, and I do mean fast-tracking it in the wake of the largest natural disaster and fire in LA County's history, when the, when the focus of the city is really was, but on rebuilding all the 480 homes that burned down. So I, I get that everyone's been waiting for a skate park for a long time, but it has, in recent memory, been fast-tracked, so I encouraged them to talk to Judy, which I believe they did, and Hamish, they also talked to Hamish. And I appreciate the two of you speaking and making comments, and I think that, from my view, this is, this is, there's two neighbors here that are not necessarily normal people that would hang out with each, or entities that would hang out with each other. Skate park, big mansion homes, and developers, but they got to live with each other for the long term, and it's best to establish that good working relationship right now. And I think that the more they can work together and think cooperatively at this stage, and then for the, for the permanent park, I think that's the way that we should go. So I appreciate the hard work that's been done to make this project happen, and the passion of all our future skaters of Malibu, and I'm inclined to go with the recommendation of my hard-working and dedicated Parks and Rec Commissioner, as well as Hamish, who is really the one who's probably been, is engaged in this forever. And he is a slow-growth guy and, and, you know, not necessarily a pro-development gentleman, but also these fine gentlemen here who have got a project that, you know, for me, the Krammer Project is the one that got away, and I wish I'd been a city council member back then and bought that property because it's heartbreaking. But that ship has sailed, and you have a project, you own it, it's your property, you're doing what you're supposed to. I think that from this, in the spirit of compromising cooperation, I think there's a solution here, and I'm inclined to accommodate, my, I want to hear what all the other council members say, but I'm generally inclined to accommodate the requests of the developer and get this show on the road, and appreciate the fact that they didn't use the appeal option that would have, you know, thrown a big grenade in the project. And I think that this is, in some ways, a good metaphor for a lot of things that should be happening in Malibu, the people working together to come up with a credible solution that may not be perfect for both sides, but that we have a working entity that gets everybody to the, you know, reach across the aisle and shake the hands and accomplish the mission, accomplish the mission for these gentlemen, and accomplish the mission for all these skaters as quickly as possible. And also, and I want to say again, thank you very much, Judy, for all the hard work you've done on this, it's remarkable, and you guys should be glad that she's been out frickin' fire-breathing Parks and Rec Commissioner, and also Jesse, for making this happen for all the wonderful kids of Malibu. So those are my thoughts, I want to hear everybody else say. One more comment, I thought that Leila was awesome. Now, there's a future entrepreneur. You might want to consider, you might want to earmark her for a future part of your organization, but you heard him, I think he said that he'd be inclined to throw out the cash, and maybe in terms of the permanent project, if we could get the tape for this meeting, maybe we can hold him to it sometime in the future. But I thought that was great, Leila, that was a good comment.
Okay, thank you, Rick. Who else?
I'll go. Thank you for your comments, Leila and Finn, much appreciated. Judging by your character and your ability to speak, you are too bright to be on a city council. So I'm including myself. I just want to disclose, I spoke to Robert last week, he came out, reached out for a meeting up at the property. I didn't have a chance, but I did walk it today thoroughly, and I can see Scott and Robert's concerns, and I also understand the skaters' concerns. So I think what we're trying to do here tonight is find a balance for everybody and get this park moving and get Scott, his property project, on the market. Thank you.
Okay, sure.
Okay, my disclosure, I met with the group that was described that met up there, Hamish, Judy, Scott, Robert, Jesse, Kristen, somebody else? Bonnie, thank you, I knew I was missing somebody. And didn't learn anything that hasn't been discussed here tonight. And, and I have to reiterate, just huge thank you, particularly, I have to start with Hamish, who's just hung in there for so long on this project. So once again, in public, Hamish, thank you very much, you're awesome, and Judy, and thank you, Judy, you have been a major, major inspiration on this, and Jesse, I continue to be very impressed with your dedication and just driving this forward, and so many other people, the skate moms, big time. Without you, I don't think we'd be here, you guys have been amazing, and bringing down, I don't know how you drove this many kids down here, but this, I know that one of you has a giant vehicle, so I guess that thing was full. So though, where I'm at, though, disappointed to see the design change, I have to agree that let's get this thing going and get it open without any delays. I think the pain of that, for me to say that, is somewhat tampered by Scott's generous $72,000 donation he made tonight, and I just want to acknowledge him in public, that was actually, maybe, I wrote 72, but if it's 73, we'll find out. So yeah, I think we really just need to get this going. This has been, I've been waiting for a skate park since I was these kids' age, so it's time, and let's get this going, let's get the permanent going, let's keep our eye on the permanent, as Heather said, and I'd say we push forward, that's where I'm sitting right now. Thanks.
Okay, thank you, Skylar.
All right, thank you to all the speakers. Hamish, I love you, thank you. And Josh, my newer commissioner, thank you very much. You know, this one, I definitely understand where, where Scott and Robert are coming from, as well as where the children and youth in our community and all the skaters are coming from. I think it's a shame to lose the fun box, I'd like to see us to, you know, make this thing happen in a way where we don't have to lose that. And I think it's silly to put the chain link fence on the inside if we're gonna consider putting a hedge in. I think we're starting to shrink things too much, so I think you go with the hedge, I don't think we need to go with the chain link adjacent to that wall. I actually like graffiti, I consider it art, although you probably wouldn't want to see it on the opposite side of that wall, but if it was on the skate park side of the wall, I think it actually might add to the, to the park. So I'm taking maybe a little bit more of an urban look at it, as some would say, but I actually, I think there's a lot of value in that, whether it's a mural or something else. So I'd like to see us figure out a way to keep the size of the park similar, but to put in the hedge that's referenced. I would be inclined to support if the city were to figure out a way to be able to put the hedge on the other side and work with the property owner to get that done in a timely manner, as opposed to it going on the opposite side of the fence. That seems to me is a little bit more of a logical area for it to go. I'm not aware of many- I'm not aware of many skate parks where the, the border is a hedge like that. A lot of times it transitions from concrete or some sort of dirt or walk path or fence before it has that type of barrier. But I would be, say, go with the pros and let them come up with something. And I appreciate everyone's time on this.
Thank you. I too thank all of our advocates of all ages. You guys are, you have stamina. I will say that much. Okay, Jesse, I would like to repeat Judy's question. Does a smaller fun box look feasible in the proposed modifications?
Maybe. We did speak, I did speak with a design consultant about putting in, there is something we could put there. What we specifically talked about were speed humps, which are, they're just humps to help you carry speed and get through that, that section because it's so wide. So, um, I'm certain that we can figure something like that out. I don't know structurally if we can add something else there without, you know, messing that space up. It's the distance between, if you could throw it back up on the screen, Alex and Parker, the slide that's up. The difference between, from here to here is roughly 35 feet or so. So if it was something, it'd probably be relatively small that would go there, so I don't know.
It seems like you'd almost want the ramp actually closer to that other structure than having that distance. So it's sort of lame designed like that.
That's, that's.
Because you can't, you can't carry the speed off of the height of that ramp to get all the way over to the other feature in the park. That's the whole reason for having the fun box there. So that's why I think the, the skaters here made a significant argument in favor of that feature.
I would agree.
Can I ask a question, Jesse? So is there, like, why can't we just shift the whole park 35 feet and then put the handicap parking on the opposite side where we're losing those other space?
Like, the one, our one thought process on that was, for safety reasons, we did want a large drop-off and pickup area. That was something that was key to us, so that there was enough flow for traffic going around here. And you can see it here. You could see the flow of the traffic coming in. We have two handicap accessible spaces here. One thing I didn't mention is that there is going to be a crosswalk here from Bluffs Park, and there's going to be an entrance here coming into the park on this side. That's to keep kids and traffic from, from coming into that one area over here. So, um, we could certainly condense that. I don't, I would have to speak with, with Public Works and see what kind of engineering logistics we'd be looking at. You would also be looking at this space over here on the west side just being, I guess, more unusable, depending on what you decide to do with it.
I would, it seems to me like what looks like the oval there in the middle could become a circle. And on the opposite side, the area that we're referencing that would not be being used could be picnic tables or something else. And even maybe be enclosed in that area. And if we're gonna shift the, if you're gonna shift the ramps away from the wall due to a hedge, you know, you, I guess at that point, you might as well make it big enough so that you could walk around that side so people can spectate or whatever else, so maybe.
Yeah, and that's why we were, when we talked about the reduction, you know, this shows essentially a four-foot reduction there. So that's the fencing, just the fencing from the concrete wall. So, um, we, there needs, we'll make a determination on how close to put that equipment to the fencing once that fencing is installed. I think originally we had said the two feet out on site, we had said two feet plus there'd be another foot or two until the equipment's there would be acceptable. And then at, towards the end of the staff report deadline, it came back at four feet, which would push the equipment potentially further. So I think that's, that's part of why we wanted to bring it here, because you talk about doing that, it, it will reduce the size.
Okay, so maybe we then eliminate the fence and that and, and that stuff. But if you look at the, on the wider side of the park adjacent to where the traffic circulation feature is, you know, that would only have to come over about 15 feet, maybe 20 feet, to encompass the entire square footage of the other referenced area. So I don't see anything that precludes us from shifting that over and asking for a minimal rea, I mean, they basically know the features of the, the park the way it is now. Stuff's moving over a little bit. And that we approve that. Is there any opposition to that by the council?
Just one, one quick point is, our big concern in, in shifting that much further was the entryway. I'm not sure how much further we can shift it without taking it further around the curve, if it has to go to where the current entrance is, where the developer's using it or not. I know that was one concern that Public Works initially mentioned when we did explore this, was that that driveway, I don't know how shiftable it is as you start to go around the bin there, if it has to be on a flush surface or not.
Well, we got the developers here, so maybe we can ask that question.
Well, I think, if Rob, Rob, if you can come up and help us, help us get there. Public Works.
Can I just say something? Public Works has approved an encroachment permit, so the entrance is going to move, that existing construction entrance is going to be closed. So you will have that room there. You're gonna enter the site all the way down at the cul-de-sac by the maintenance shed. So there will be room that.
Thank you. I think specifically the question is where this proposed entrance is into the parking area, if that can move down.
So you want to shift it down, I think you said 30 feet?
No, it'll probably be like 15 to 20 feet.
15, 20 feet?
Because even though if we moved it, the other thing's 35 feet, that area is wider, so we wouldn't need that.
Yeah, I, I don't see a problem with that. I think you're gonna lose some parking spaces, maybe on the, in, in the right-hand side over there. But, but 15, 20 feet?
How many?
15, 20 feet, probably four.
But there's nothing, Rob, if, let's say we're gonna lose four parking spaces with that, we'll go with that number. If we were to make that oval-shaped area in the turnaround become more of a circle, would that kind of maybe offset that a little bit?
That could. We could take a look at it and see, maybe you would gain the two more spots, maybe, I would see. But, um, but you, yeah, we'd have to look at it and see if you can gain the other four.
Okay, so it's possible.
It's possible, yeah, yes.
Scott and Robert, do you have any issue with what is being referenced right now? Okay. So it, I mean, from my perspective, it seems like that would kind of work both of these issues out. I think the thing that we have to get specific with is, with the hedge landscaping and how that is handled or taken care of.
Okay, thank you, Skylar. Yeah, progress. All right, um, so as Skylar said, another thing to work out is this hedge detail. We had a comment, I think from Mr. Gillen, about watering the hedge. And you said you didn't know that you were allowed to water a hedge on the other side of the property line, but that you would be willing to do that. Okay. Do you mind coming back to the podium? Sorry.
Yeah, maybe the, the money that Scott referenced earlier could help us drag a line from our current existing water supply to the hedge.
So the fence issue is never my issue. The fence is the city's issue of concern about protecting the wall, so there's no liability. I don't care if there's a fence or not. I don't care if you want to, at the end of the day, when there's a permanent skate park, if you want to graffiti the wall, it's not, it's my wall, it's on your side, so I don't see it. And it's solid, so I don't really care about that. As far as the temporary hedge that, that we would propose to put in from the front and then down the side to the, to the bend in the, in the wall, we can water that in the interim, no problem. We have water. I can't move it to my side because I have hundreds of pipes already along that wall from fire line, gas line, internet, you have no idea. Not to mention going back to the CDP and making adjustment in all the homes. That's, that's, unless someone's gonna say I can do that, but I don't think that's a, an option for me. Yeah, we'll water the hedge.
Okay, thank you.
Was there anything, Jesse, that came back from our staff about what should be planted there?
Yeah, so I, the request that came from Scott and Robert or from, from Case was specifically, there were, there were lots of options. Carolina cherry, eupine, ficus, or another suitable species as approved by the city biologist. So we have some ideas on some things that could work. Our real issue is gonna be getting mature enough trees that can get to that eight-foot height from the.
I think you can drive up Enstel Canyon, you'll find a ficus farm that has more than its fair share of six-foot ficus trees.
Yeah, it's got thousands.
I would actually not like to see ficus in that area at all. So, um, do you have another suggestion? Okay, so, yeah.
We picked the Carolina cherries because they grow fast, they're pretty, they're non-invasive. The ficus is a root issue, so there's lots of issues. Carolina cherries would be great. We already have them picked out at full height. Would be a nice hedge. Again, I'm paying for them, so why not?
Okay, so it would be, it's my understanding that these would be, go in a temporary fashion because they're gonna be there for a couple of years or a few years until the permanent park is built. And it would be put into wood planters or however they came. Two by whatever, wherever the boxes are that they would come in. And that the water's gonna be provided, that they would be watered by the, by the case development during that time. And the leaves would be cleaned up, obviously, by city staff. Is there any other details other than, I don't think that we need the fence by the concrete wall. And I don't know if there's, if we have consensus on that?
I'll support you on this.
Okay, so Christie, is there anything else that we need to do or can I make a motion? Okay, so make a motion to move the park as, go ahead, John.
I just want to have you get an opinion from your attorney. This is a, a issued and, and vested CDP, and nobody appealed it. You're changing it. You're moving boundaries, you're changing equipment, you're adding a landscape plan. And the question is, do you have the authority to change it once it's been issued? And that will cause you a delay, maybe.
Okay. Best answer that?
Good evening, Madam Mayor, council members. The answer to the question is that what you're doing tonight is approving a conceptual design for the park. And we'll bid it out and get it designed for you. And when the final design comes, we will compare it to the CDP. And if we have to make adjustments to the CDP, we will. And if it's consistent, then you'll be done. But you're not addressing the CDP tonight. This is the design for the park.
Okay, so I will make a motion to, Heather, or Kelsey, do you have enough direction? I'm gonna go through it, but let, let me know if you need me to clarify anything, okay? So we'd be moving the park approximately 20 feet to the east, southeast, or easterly direction to accommodate for the, the features of the fun box, quarter pipe, plaza, and, and said items. There would be no fencing in front of the concrete wall. And we would have a hedge that would be provided by the case development owner and watered by the development owner. And we would clean up the leaves from that hedge. And it would approximately shift the, the entry to the parking area, that same 20 feet in the easterly direction, and provide for some picnic tables or other things in the area for where it got moved on the west side.
That was 35 feet doing it.
They wanted to move it 35 feet, but we don't need to move it 35 feet because that part of the park's a lot wider.
Okay. Does that work?
I did not measure the 20 for the 35, but we wanted to move it, well, we, I requested to move it to the point of 65 feet setback from my side, which is where the wall goes up. And that would be 65 feet front yard setback.
Is that where that bend is?
No, the bend is, is up there at the other end where the, where the park is depicted to complete.
Uh, is there a pointer?
Well, why don't we just say move it to that point and then move the other end the same way?
The 65-foot point is, the 65-foot setback is the point of the six-foot high fence, which is where I wanted the quarter pipe to start.
I, I understand that. My question for you is if you could just identify approximately on the map where that is.
It's where the green line is. That's where the green line goes up from the, straight up.
That's accurately the, so you, what you said in the staff report is that it had to move like 35 feet? So that's correct. Okay, so then we're on, we're, we're correct.
And then in your, your motion, can we go back to the other picture for a second, the design? So in the quarter pipe, we'd also requested that I could put the Carolina cherries across the front of that, which I'm assuming you're gonna put a fence now, so there'd be cherries going down the front to block the backside of the quarter pipe and then along the edge to the completion of where the bend.
I don't have an issue with that, but there may be an entrance to the area there, so that wouldn't be blocking the entrance.
It would, we would run them, we would run that length of it, if you're looking at it on the screen, you can see the pointer here.
I see what you're talking about, the backside of the.
That, that's what Jesse had discussed with us on, at, at the site.
Yes, it may not go the full length, though, if we have a fence that go, or a gate that opens into the area. Okay, thank you, Scott.
Thank you.
All right, and just to be straight with you, are you still willing to, you know, pony up a little $72,000 here?
That was for the permanent.
What's, what was that? You're gonna wait for the surprise. Okay, so when we get to the CDP phase, we'll discuss that.
Okay, so do we need that motion repeated? Kelsey, do you mind doing that? Thank you.
So Councilmember Peak made a motion, I believe, to direct staff to work with the consultant to modify the design for the temporary skate park at the Kramer Case property adjacent to Malibu Bluffs Park to move the skate park approximately 20 feet east to accommodate all the current features in the draft design. It will not include any fencing, but it will include a hedge to be provided and watered by the case developer with debris cleaned up by city staff and to potentially shift the parking area entrance as necessary for the redesign.
Okay, wait, is it 20, is it 35?
Can I just, want to make sure that the council knows that where we're comfortable in terms, or not comfortable, where we're within the purview of the CDP, we'll make changes and proceed on the same schedule. If there's changes that exceed what the CDP allows, we're gonna have to amend the CDP. So it may have to come in a phased approach where we move forward with moving some of the elements, which I don't believe would impact the CDP, off the top of my head. But the hedges and some of those other issues might have to come back as an amended CDP. And I just want to make sure that you understood that, that we, within the purview of the existing CDP.
That's fine. Do you have to have a permit to have a plant in a box? I don't believe you do. Do you, John?
So the mobility is the issue quite often, and when it's in a box, it's mobile.
That's not an authoritative answer. We'll, we'll get back to you on that.
Okay, but I'm confused. Is it 20 feet or 35 feet?
It's 20, it would be extending the eastern line of it approximately 20 feet. And on the western line, it would be pulling back about 35 feet. And the reason for that is because that's much narrower and the other part's much wider.
Okay, got it. Thank you.
Square footage would be similar.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second? Or any other comment?
Yes, on, last one, on Scott's generous offering, it looks like it's gonna be favorable based upon what I can perceive. Can we also add that in there? Because we're gonna have some cost of line features that we're gonna have to pick up as a city.
No, no, no.
They, he generously made an offer.
Yeah, we, you, you, you can't have as part of your conceptual design that he's gonna give us a donation. We'll, we'll have, we have to deal with that separately. We don't have the governmental power to take that.
Seems that only Leila Polito can work that deal.
It wouldn't look good. Okay.
You are a lot of witnesses.
Bring the kids back. We need help.
I did, I did want to be clear. I know that we referenced the no. I know that we referenced the no fencing, that's along the concrete portion of the wall, but we are gonna do some fencing in the other area. So I didn't want you to think that I wasn't talking about that. As much as I don't think that a skate park needs a fence, a lot of people do believe that it does.
And just to clarify, that would be the entire length of the property against the concrete wall? Or are you talking about the temporary skate park only?
No, no, I just wanted to be clear that you're gonna have a fence around a portion of the skate park?
Correct.
Not the portion where the concrete wall is?
Yes, the fencing does extend the entire length of the property along the concrete wall, though, the chain link fencing. That was at Robert's request in our first one-on-one meeting, so...
But we went over that, they took that out?
Okay, but that's what I mean. You're not talking just the temporary skate park, you're talking the whole length of it.
Yeah, I don't, I mean, there's no reason to have fencing down there.
I'm with you.
Okay. Correct? Yeah. Yes, okay, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second? All in favor?
The check will be at the city tomorrow, okay?
Thank you, thank you for everybody that put in their time on that item.
Okay, it's 9:17 PM. Let's take a brief recess and try to be back. I'll save five minutes, let's do the best we can, thank you.
Okay, please take your seats. We're reconvening the meeting at 9:28. Thank you. Yes.
Mayor, can I make a motion to approve the consent calendar pulling item 3B7?
And I just have to add, I have to accuse myself on 3B8.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, all in favor of approving the consent calendar pulling item 3B7?
Aye.
Aye.
Wait, how do I vote on that because it included 3B8?
Because that will, when you vote yes, it will show that you've recused yourself.
Aye.
Okay, could, let's see, 3B7, excuse me. Could we please have a staff report, Jesse, on item 3B7?
Good evening again, Mayor Farrar, members of City Council. Item 3B7 is our agreement for the selected consultant for our permanent skate park. We released the RFP for the design work on November 14th, right after the council approved the RFP at the November 12th council meeting, and we received five proposals by the December 18th deadline. We conducted interviews with four of those firms on January 15th, American Ramp Company, California Skate Parks, New Line Skate Parks, and Wormhout Incorporated. The interview panel consisted of our Parks and Recreation Chair at the time, Judy Villa Blanca, Finn Murphy and Paula Murphy, one of our local parents and youth, and then myself. So, the panel selected California Skate Parks for multiple reasons, but particularly their portfolio of projects and their experience working with municipalities, as well as their ability to incorporate environmental features that would be environmentally friendly, such as drainage or things like that, lots of landscaping in ways that don't affect the flow or cause a danger in the skate park, but are beneficial to the project in that way. So, we expect the design process to take 10 to 12 months. That's a conservative estimate. It's possible we could finish a touch quicker. And then the construction process with bidding and the actual work would be 14 to 16 months. So, our plan, as we're moving right now, would be to open the permanent skate park in the middle of 2022. So, our recommendation is the approval of this agreement with California Skate Parks to begin that design process.
Okay, thank you, Jesse. We have some public speaker slips. The first speaker is John Mazza, followed by Judy Villa Blanca, followed by Finn Murphy.
Good evening. I'm here not to talk about skate parks, really. I'm here to talk about the process of bidding, because we've recently had several instances where we're taking the higher bid. And in this case, you hired American Ramp Company to do the project you just considered. And you hired them because the panel unanimously selected American Ramp due to their professional proposal experience with, and prior work with municipalities. Now, you're proposing to hire American Skate Parks because of their proposed successful projects, experience working with utilities, and incorporating environmentally sensitive designs. But, you're paying $26,000 more, almost twice as much. And both of them been selected as good contractors. So, I just want you to consider the fact that that's kind of a strange bidding process. And you're taking a panel, none of which are experts, and, well, one of which is an expert, and making that choice. So, it's choices coming to you. Do you want to pay double for essentially selecting another contractor you haven't used against a contractor you have used? So, and is the $26,000 useful somewhere else? Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Judy Villa Blanca, followed by Finn Murphy, followed by Hamish Patterson? Go ahead.
I may have taken him home. So, I had the privilege of sitting through the interviews with the various companies, and I would strongly support picking California Skate Parks. Finn was there, and I think, obviously, he's the expert skater, and he know, he could tell you the details of every park, he probably will, around this entire state. And these guys have done a lot of parks, so they, you know, they know their stuff. But compared to American Ramp, I will say, American Ramp's vibe, if you will, was much more, they want to make like an Instagram-worthy park, they want to make it, you know, more of like a scene, whereas I felt like California Skate Parks understood what the setting of Malibu is, you know, more rural, more natural, that kind of thing. They definitely were speaking to all those issues, as Jesse pointed out, whereas like when we came back to American Skate ramps and asked them about, you know, well, you know, do you understand how to do drainage in a place like this? Do you incorporate native, you know, planting, that kind of thing? You could tell they definitely fumbled on that. They kind of didn't really have a good answer. So, I mean, I think they're all good skaters, but I think the, I really felt like California Skate Parks just was more in tune with our setting as a city, and Finn gave it the blessing from, in terms of the, you know, their ability to design the park. So, I think they were really good, and I would favor supporting them. And thank you for the temporary park, and thank you for pushing this forward.
Thank you. Okay, the next speaker is Finn Murphy, and then I believe Hamish is not here.
Hi, I'd just like to, before I start, I'd like to thank all the council, and I'd like to thank Jesse and Judy for sitting in on that meeting with us. That was a long day, but it was fun. And with that, I'd like to just suggest that you do use California Skate Parks, because there are so many parks, all of my favorites, all of my friends' favorites, all of like people I've met, all of, like, just everything about California Skate Parks is just way better than everyone else. And even though it might be a little bit more expensive, there's like a reason for that, because parks are much like higher quality, more fun, more like, even scientifically, like, they do the math on everything of like flow and everything, and they've done studies. And I just think they're very professional, and they're very good to the skaters and to everyone else. And they've done all the Vans Parks, which are my personal favorites, all the Vans Parks. They've done Etnies, they've done, what else have they done? They've done, like, Linda Vista, which is one of the biggest parks in California, which is another one of my personal favorites, so. And they've done so many more in Southern California, Northern California, and they've also done all the contest series, like SLS and X Games and Vans Park Series, and they've done everything, and they've trusted with them, because the contest runners have like trusted them because, for a reason, because they're the best. And I strongly urge you to choose them. Thank you.
Thank you. Madam Mayor, can I just jump in? You have no more speakers, right? Just jump in real quickly with a clarification about the process. There are two kinds of contracts that you let. One is a Public Works contract, and that's when somebody is going to actually build something. And under those circumstances, state law requires you to give it to the lowest responsible bidder. This is not that. This is a professional services agreement. And as Finn would say, there are good reasons why you're not bound to the lowest bidder, because you take into account the kinds of things we've heard, their reputation, their history, the maybe unique perspective, there are all kinds of things that go into a professional that would change the price. So, you're not bound to the lowest bidder, the way you are with Public Works contracts.
Okay, thank you for that clarification, Kristi. Do we have any council comments?
I'd like to thank Kristi once again for clarifying that, because I like what John said, but here again, we're not building it, we're just designing it. Thank you.
My quick comment would be, Finn, thank you so much for being a part of the process. I can't tell you how valuable that is and how much we appreciate it. So, I know you put in some long hours, and thanks for, Mom, for driving you around. So, really, really appreciate you being a part of it. I just wanted to let you know, thanks.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve design for California, design done by California Skate Parks for a permanent skate park in Malibu.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, moving on, item 3B8, Mayor Protem Pearson is going to recuse himself.
That item was approved as part of the consent calendar.
Never mind. We're moving on to item 4A. Kristi, are you going to handle that report?
I can. So, I don't have much to add to the written report, but just to remind you that this is the second meeting in our listening tour, that we're here to hear what people's suggestions and thoughts are about the maps. And the next two meetings that we have are going to be, you know, the big ones. That will be where we'll kind of go out of our way to make sure that we get broad notice and broad participation, because that's when we'll be actually looking at maps, and it'll be easier to, for people to make comments rather than in the abstract. And then after all of that, we'll come back to you again, and then it'll be time for us to take some action. That concludes our report.
Okay, thank you. All right, we will go to public speakers. The first speaker is Norm Haney, followed by John Mazza, followed by Lance Simmons, who has four minutes. Thank you.
Good evening, council members, and Chair Farrar. You know, I've looked, I'm sure you've all looked at this the same way that I have. There's simply no prejudice here in the city of Malibu. Every one of the city council members are passionately concerned about every area within the city of Malibu, whether it's Trancas or Ram Pacifico, or whether it's Big Rock. I think that you all are very concerned about the entire city. And I understand the issue with regard to the threatened litigation, and it seems to me like, if you have to have a district, you might consider a checkerboard type of district, where, let's say, Big Rock. Everybody has a small, little district in Big Rock. Now, that wouldn't cover all of Malibu, so you go to Trancas. Everybody has a small portion of their district within Trancas. Now, it sounds probably a little outrageous, maybe, because the districts are not all tied together, but do they need to be? I don't have the answer to that. Just a thought. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, the next speaker is John Mazza, followed by Lance Simmons, followed by Scott Dietrich.
First, this is the last meeting before the maps come out. We've had a total of seven speakers. It's been at 10 o'clock at night. That is not a lot of input, because three of them were the same. So, there's actually four people spoken to you about this, in the whole city. So, the outreach should have been now, not months from now. Now, one of the things you're going to decide is having outreach on the whole issue when it comes up, I guess, near a vote. And I want to make sure that you instruct staff that that cannot be biased. It has to have the same amount of pros and cons, because there's going to be a major fight against this. And I don't want to sit there and hear the city say, oh, this is wonderful, in the outreach with taxpayer dollars. Now, last time I was here, I talked about a horizontal district, and so did Craig. And when you go through the requirements, there's a good reason for that. And that is, you have to have supposedly the same interests. So, in this criteria for districts, they shall be contiguous, that's contiguous. They should be common issues of the neighborhood, and there isn't a common issue between somebody who lives on Colony Beach and somebody who lives at the top of Rambla, okay? The culture is different. The beach culture, as you know, is different than the mountain culture. I've lived in both of them. There's several others. Similar levels of income. Obviously, the beach has a higher income than the top of a canyon. Obviously. I mean, you could probably buy all the tops of the canyon for four houses on the beach. So, the other real problem I see is, this is the last meeting. Next meeting, we're going to see the maps. What's the input to the demographer? It's basically nothing. And so, you say, oh, we get it down and dirty when the maps come out, but the demographer, he has no input. And then you have one meeting after that, and it's done. So, this is, this is the biggest thing that's ever happened to Malibu, and we're not, we're not studying it, we're not doing anything. Essentially, three people making comments. That's it. And no outreach to the city right now. So, this is really, really a big deal, and I hope you appreciate that some of this needs to be done. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Lance Simmons. You have four minutes, as long as Doug Stewart is here. And then, followed by Scott Dietrich and David Kramer.
Well, good evening, Madam Mayor, City Council. As you continue your hearings on by-district voting, I think it's important to keep a couple of things in mind. And first, and most important thing to keep in mind, is common sense. Now, I know that that's probably a foreign concept in most governmental units, but common sense, so that what at first appears to be counterintuitive, may actually be counterintuitive. Use your brains. In a white paper prepared by the Rose Center for State and Local Government at Claremont McKenna College in 2016, they looked at communities that had switched or were in the process of switching to by-district elections. Of the 10 cities that had already switched, the percentage of Latino citizen voting age population ranged from a high of 74% to a low of 24%. Among the 21 cities that were about to hold their first by-district election that year, Latino citizen voting age population ranged from 79% to 19%. In Malibu, the projected Latino citizen voting age population is thought to be somewhere in the range of between 6.1% and 8%. It makes sense that large communities with large minority populations, or even small communities with large minority populations, would find this a far more significant issue than we would here in Malibu. And since the prominent argument for advancing this lawsuit is that it promotes racial polarization, it seems that the case in a community where the minority representation is so small, and it, as best I can tell, not geographically concentrated in any one area, it is highly unlikely that racial polarization exists here. I would go out on a limb. I'd say it doesn't exist here. Now, there are statistical analyses that measure vote dilution, and it is crucial that we measure the extent to which racial polarization is in fact an issue in Malibu. If it's not, we can't be extorted into going to by-district elections. It is counterintuitive. It makes no sense. Now, I'm not an attorney, but I've drafted more legislation than probably any two attorneys that you can find. And I know that you can draft very, very poorly worded legislation. The California Voting Rights Act is just such an example. It's poorly worded, it's bad legislation. Now, the intention is fine. No one is ever going to question my liberal credentials. And if I thought that there was one scintilla of proof that we were racially polarized here, I would be leading the charge.
Thank you.
It's just not the case. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, the next speaker is David Kramer, excuse me, sorry, Scott Dietrich, followed by David Kramer.
Thank you. I don't need statistics to know that this is a shakedown. There's an attorney trying to use a poorly-written law, as Lance said, for personal profit. It has nothing to do with discrimination. We elected as a city Larry Wan. I don't know what the percentage of Asians are, but it's much less than the percentage of Hispanics in our city. That ought to be proof enough. We can use a lot of the information that was developed by Santa Monica. Now, they lost, but I think there was a good reason that they lost their defense, because they do have a significant population of Hispanics that was probably being disenfranchised. Not the case here. It's just not true. And if we buckle under, the consequences, we will balkanize, divide up our city into districts, geographically it looks like, and you'll get districts that don't have common interests, where, as John said, I look at you guys on the council as representing me, not because of where you live or where I live, but because we're all part of Malibu. Our interests have much more, there's so many things that we have to fight in Malibu, and the main thing is, we're trying to prevent our city from becoming Newport Beach. And you, in your own way, act on that. We just saw a perfect example of everyone coming together to get a temporary skate park. And Schuyler happened to have some unique knowledge on how to make skate parks work. And so, we came up with a consensus, you came up with a consensus, and we moved forward. So, yeah, it's going to take some money, and we need to fight this and protect our city. If, on the other hand, we must go forward with this and agree to district-wide election, at least as one of the two options was, have an elected mayor, so at least there's one person that represents all of us. But I don't like that idea either. Thank you.
Thank you. The last speaker on this item is David Kramer.
I agree with most of what everybody just said about this issue. My seat here today is not about the maps in general, but the issue in general. I'm David Kramer, have lived on Dune Drive for 32 years. I've emailed you, this response, as well as a number of points about Mrs. Grimes' threatening letter, and miscellaneous questions regarding the process and other information, I, and I believe the Malibu community, would like to know. I've also sent you previous emails, as well as lot sizes, but not populations, on various Malibu areas or districts, and I think the populations need to be considered. I grew up in racially mixed schools, and my best friends were Black, Latino, Chinese, and all religious backgrounds, and whites. All were very good friends of mine, and this upbringing made me not prejudiced. I was more lower class, was able to make a good career in business and finance. That is why I've taken the time on this matter, because in essence, I feel Mr. Grimes' money-making schemes make Latinos look bad, and in no way will districting help Latinos be elected in the small 13,000 population of Malibu. In fact, I could, it could work against them. I believe that large election council members from day one always look after the community as a whole, and having revolving mayors also helps the community at large elections. Yes, sometimes an area can get hurt, but having districts to me, means there will be conflicts in the sense that districts will most likely look after their area, they represent, and not necessarily the city as a whole. Districting will destroy the overall sense of our community. I just do not see discrimination in Malibu by area, race, value, or other measure. Mrs. Grimes is trying to destroy the overall sense of Malibu community, and this scheme will not, will probably hurt Latinos. What are the positive aspects of this scheme? Profit for Mr. Grimes. I always look for the most qualified, experienced individual during elections, as most Malibu residents do, and color has nothing to do with it. I just do not understand why Latinos are not given a try to be elected, to even try to understand Mr. Grimes' allocations. How will district maps be drawn up, and no matter how they are, how will approximately 6% to 8% Grimes' numbers of Latinos benefit? Does this number include registered voters? What is the proof that Malibu elections are conducted in a racially polarized manner?
Thank you.
How are the Latinos discriminated against?
Thank you. Okay, that concludes public comments.
Madam Mayor, can I make a couple of quick comments, just to respond? First of all, the California Voting Rights Act so favors district elections as a solution that it actually authorizes the city council to switch the form of governance, just on your own, by ordinance. And when we got the letter from Mr. Grimes, you know, we discussed that, and I think, you know, Mr. Mazza is absolutely right. It's, I don't know if it's the most important thing, I don't mean you're right about that, but I do, but it is a very important thing. And the form of governance and how people are represented is a very meaningful thing. And there are pros and cons for districts, and what the council decided was not to be extorted, because And what the council decided was not to be extorted because you are, decided not to respond with just an ordinance changing to district elections, but instead to engage in a meaningful discussion with the community, which granted, these two hearings, we always knew were kind of prefatory. We're going to really work hard to bring people out, to look at maps, and to talk about what district representation would mean, and have a serious discussion about that form of governance and how it might get implemented. And then, we'll take it from there. You know, if, if this goes forward, it's going to be decided by the people. And that's the, you know, bottom line here. It's the, it's not just the four people who spoke and the five of you collaborating. It'll go on November 2020 ballot at a presidential election, where I hope there's going to be a high turnout in California because there are other big things going on in this country. And it'll be an opportunity for the people of Malibu to weigh in on it. And that's, I mean, that's where we're going with this. So, you know, I understand the arguments, and some of them are good arguments. There are arguments against district elections, and that is a discussion that we're having. But if we were to just decide here whole hog, not to go forward, then you'd be making the decision as much as if, you know, you were to decide to actually go to districts on your own. So, the thinking, at least for now, and again, we haven't done anything that's irreversible, is to go forward with this, find out what the districts look like, and talk to a lot more people who live in the city about this. And then, the other issue I just wanted to mention real briefly is that we're not yet litigating the case. There may come a time when we will litigate the case. We're not conceding anything about whether or not we're required to do anything under the California Voting Rights Act, because from your point of view, this is really about responding not just to the Mr. Grimes, but to other residents who have come and asked about the form of governments. And so, this is an opportunity to have that conversation. We've been around now for, what, 29 years? And so, I guess every 29 years, you should do some self-reflection.
Thank you, Christie. Okay, council comments? Anybody?
It was Thomas Jefferson that said change of government every 20 years. Close. Okay.
I, I guess had some questions, kind of just on if, when going about this and making sure that we meet all of the criteria. A couple of those things were brought up tonight. But I think it's important for us to actually look at, when we talk about issues in neighborhoods, and I mean, how best to make it so that something incorporates a coastal area, area on PCH, and a mountain area in each one of those districts seems kind of difficult unless you drew a line from the mountain to the sea in whatever, four different, or five different districts. Seems to me like the only way, and I was just kind of curious to hear from council of how else they would be able to achieve that goal, other than doing that.
I'll give a stab. I, I really like the novel idea of the horizontal slices, but when I read the way this lays out, it doesn't sound like, if I'm reading the language correctly, that that's possible because you're dividing neighborhoods into different districts. So, suddenly, you know, Malibu West, we're in different districts. That's, that, I just don't see how that would work here. But I like the idea. I think it's a very clever idea. I just don't know how to make that work. So, I, I don't see any other way than to divide it sort of in fifths, kind of the way our fire zones are, you know, so to speak, that I've, that I can see. And, you know, if I was to, looking at Government Code Section 34871, under criteria for election sequencing, we have a couple of things here. Number one and two, number one, districts in five, seven, or nine districts, or by districts in four, six, and eight with an elective mayor. I would be much more in favor of the first one, in doing five. We're used to having five city council people. It seems to fit the size of our town. So, I would do that. And as far as the elective mayor, I think that's fine, but I think that needs to be brought up, not by us, but by, if the citizens want to bring forward an item and put it on the ballot, I'd, I'd be fine with that, but I don't think that's a decision for us to make. We have a form of government. I know some people are interested in elective mayor. I think that's a ballot initiative, in my opinion. So, I'd be more in favor of kind of district, five different districts, if, as we proceed down this path, to see what the people of Malibu want to vote on.
Okay, thank you.
Let me just comment on something John said. You know, you're right. There isn't a lot of public interest in this. That's why people aren't showing up. You know, people come down here because they're passionate about something, or there's a need that needs to be filled, a skate park, you know, or a house I got to get built, or a fire safety issue, or whatever. There aren't many people in Malibu where they're like, "We need district voting." So, there's not interest in it at all. It's not on everyone's radar. We will be doing, like Christie said, more educating about it. It's, you're right, it's very important, and it's a significant decision, and that's why we're gravitating toward giving the decision out for the people to make. And it will take a little bit of education between now and election time. So, you're right. But, you know, that's, people give up their evenings to come down here and endure these council meetings because they want to get a skate park built, or something's important to them. It's not something that's important to anybody. Once they catch on to what it is and do an analysis, then I think they'll be able to make a good decision about it, one way or the other. But it's not something that people, there's, it's only important to one person in this town, and that's how it came about. But you're right.
Thanks, Rick.
I was going to ask Christie, like, just in terms of like, numbers of people in each one of the districts, like, how much can those vary? When you, but when you, like, when you say relative, like, 10, 20? Are you talking about like, 100?
People move in and out, but the, yeah.
I know that people move in and out, but we're a relatively small population of, oh, 5%? Okay.
The goal is to make it even.
I'm sorry, overlook that.
Yeah, but the goal is to make them even. That's the goal.
So, are we going to get out a map here and chop it up? I know, we're not doing that yet.
I just want to add, I concur with what my fellow council members have said. And John, Mazza, I concur with you. I too am surprised we don't have a room full of people. This is a major, major issue. I, I don't know if people aren't paying attention, if they think it's so, so unreasonable a request, a demand on us that it's not really going to happen, or if they've, in their minds already thrown in the towel, that it is going to happen. But yeah, I would have expected we had a full room to talk about this. It's such a significant shift for our city, but we don't. So, I thank all of you who've come to speak about it and stay until 10:04 PM to listen to us. But what's before us right now on this agenda is to conduct the second public hearing to receive and consider input from the public regarding the composition of potential city council districts and sequencing of elections. And now, we've done that, I believe, to provide direction to staff and the city's demographer regarding the drafting of district maps, potential sequencing of elections, and outreach efforts for upcoming public hearings. So, that's where we are now, public, public comment or not. So, we're checking off the boxes that we're required to do, and now, we're at the point where we need to move ahead with the demographer and come up with five almost identically-sized districts.
Five is the number, unless I hear anything else. The, we'll, we'll try and figure out how to make some geographic diversity in them as well. We'll give that instruction. The, in terms of the outreach, we'd like to send a postcard to every registered voter and hold the meetings, one on the west side, one on the east side, to encourage involvement, and then do some extra outreach to the organized groups that we know in town, the homeless associations and others. So, to try and, and get more interest.
Okay, I have a question. As far as outreach goes, you know, we did so much outreach after the Woolsey fire. Do you think we'd use any of those methods? Newspaper ads, city alerts?
Yeah, I mean.
Physical sign?
Yes, we're doing all of that.
All of those?
And staff has already been out to all of the different shopping centers and spoken with the managers of all the different large stores and small stores to put up information there. So, in addition to the mailing, newspaper ads, social media, we'll be doing all of that as well.
Okay, thank you.
So, I had a question, just in terms of sequencing and how all of this would work. So, we were sort of making the decision now we would go to for five districts. That's what we would put forth. We'd direct the demographer to come up with that. Then, in terms of the, the sort of timeline for how the sequencing of the elections and everything would work, it would be my understanding that on the November ballot, you're going to have three seats that are, or two seats that are up, one that's, there may be an incumbent or may not. But the next year's election would not be under districting, and it wouldn't be until the end of Karen and Mikey's current term, that if the voters pass to vote by districts, that that would come into play.
Well, we have, we got a 2020 census coming out. So, one of the strange challenges of this timing is that we're going to have to relook at the districts anyways as soon as the census information comes out. So, the earliest would be the 2022 election, and it might be, well, they're sequenced so that they might.
Because you can't cut someone's term short.
No, we wouldn't cut anyone's term short, but there are some people who would be termed out at that point, right? So.
So, I guess, so let me ask you, it's like, what my question was, was like, how that would work with the people that you have in office? So, would all, so what you're saying is, if, for example, we did this in a few years, and Karen and Mikey are, are in office, and Mikey and Karen elect to live in the same places that they currently live, then essentially, the only people that would be voting in that next election would be the people that are from the districts that are not in that area?
I mean, it's hard because we're talking in the abstract, but when we get the districts together, we'll also.
Just to make it a little more clarified.
Where the incumbents are living, and the first districts to be voted on will be where people who have served their full term are then up for election. That's the goal. But yes, the bottom line is that nobody's term gets shortened, period. Well, they have to stand for election.
I don't think that it matters whether or not you're termed out. I think it's whether the current term that you're in is fulfilled.
You're elected for it, right.
Do you understand, Lance?
No, 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 I didn't.
No, she did not say that. You misinterpreted it.
That's not what I meant.
We will need comments to come from the mic, not from the audience.
Let's, let, let us bring back when we have this, these meetings, the sequencing, because that's part of it.
Saying it was just listed here.
Okay, thank you. So.
Do you have enough direction?
Do we have direction?
I think so. I think so.
Still in the serious Jell-O phase of this whole thing. We got a long way to go to crystallize.
There's a lot of moldings.
There's also hybrid options as well, which we haven't explored yet, but I guess we will when people bring it forward. There are hybrid options.
What options?
Hybrid options, where other cities have done it, midsize and larger cities where they have a combination of a council of five from five districts with an elected mayor. So, I believe that that'll come forward when the people start getting into this and really.
No, that's, Jay, that's in here. It gives that option.
Yeah, that's option two.
I don't, I'm, think that, unless I'm, I think we're electing not to go with that option.
I understand, but we still need to listen to the people, and they may come forward further on.
Yes. It's all about the people.
Right. So, so just to, to clarify, so the first round of maps will come out, and then, there will be some meetings, and then, they will be amended and changed in response to that. And the, that may come up. We'll see.
Great.
Okay. Thank you. All, so this item is concluded? Okay, thank you. All right, moving on. We are at item 7A? Is that correct? Did I skip something? Okay, item 7A. We have some speaker slips? Is there a report before the speakers? How does this work?
We don't have a staff report for this.
All right. Joe Drummond, followed by Rose Marie Idy, followed by Deirdre Roney. Go to the next three.
Hi, honorable council members and mayor fair. I'm here because I believe the removal of Craig Hill as planning commissioner is truly a negative thing for Malibu and its rural character and its governmental transparency. I would like to believe that our city council is not pro-development and committed to the vision and mission of our city, to ensure the physical and biological integrity of its environment through the development of land use programs and decisions to protect the public and private health, safety, and general welfare. Malibu will maintain its rural character by establishing programs and policies that avoid suburbanization and commercialization of its natural and cultural resources. This is Malibu, Malibu, apparently Malibu Municipal Code Section 17.02.030. Craig fights to protect neighborhoods in Malibu communities by asking to apply the codes correctly. In my neighborhood, as you may have heard, on my street, Pejro Chica, in Big Rock, a known active landslide area, where all geological hazards and codes in place to protect us residents are actually being ignored and waived. So, my neighbor can build on a lot that's never been built upon before, and has need for serious geological studies before anything could be built on there. This will be brought to city council in April, and I hope the codes will be respected and applied accordingly and cautiously for the sake of our hill. I'm just, I'm, I'm just here to implore you to, to make sure when you appoint someone to the planning commission, they do abide by the codes and, and just for the sake of the beaches, the, the landslide of Big Rock, everything. I'm, I'm just, I think you know how I feel about it all. So, thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Rose Marie Idy, followed by Deirdre Roney, followed by Craig Hill.
Good evening. Joe is a neighbor of mine, and I think like she does too. I oppose the removal of Greg Hill from planning commission. He's an honorable neighbor and cares about Big Rock Mesa's geological issues. I would like to know the reason for his removal. We need really transparency. We need to know why someone is removed after such a short time, and in my opinion, he did a very, very good job. Maybe he's too thorough with obeying city codes. Is it that he's aware of the geological hazards? And of, aware of permitting home additions in Lower Big Rock and other neighbors, and including ourselves? We're not going to fare well with that because we do not have very good drainage. And if we ever have a big rainy season, 30-plus inches, we're going to have it again. Then, everybody will figure it out. So, I'm not very happy about it, and I think he's a very honorable person, and I don't think we can get anyone as, as good, as caring as he. person. And I don't think we can get anyone as, as good as Karen, as he is, for this job. And I feel very, very sad about it. I only hope that there are not any incentives on the table or under the table. This is my worry a little bit. I'm observing when I come to these planning commission hearings, and it's a big concern. Thank you for listening to me.
Thank you. The next speaker is Deirdre Roney, but I don't believe she's here. Okay, the next speaker is Craig Hill, and then the next speaker is John Maza.
Oh, good evening again. I didn't expect to speak again, but I, I just wanted to express that it feels pretty outrageous to make people wait to address this item that was not on the agenda, namely what Mikey did five days ago. Officially, done deal, no action on the agenda for that. As far as an announcement, it's been published in the internet for days. A number of people came to speak, not about the next commissioner, but like these last couple of speakers. A few wanted to speak on this, could not stay, so left right away. And a few others, including Deirdre, waited hours and finally had to go home. So all those folks were deprived of due process, effectively. Anyway, Mikey, you mentioned communication. Imperfect communication. When, when either of us had advanced concerns about specific items, we would speak on it, and never did you say, "Hey, you're thinking about this all wrong." So what I'm hearing would be that the next level would be to give a direct order, or that I should be a mind reader about something that wasn't spoken, neither of which are legitimate. A council member can recommend action, but a commissioner, as a quasi-judicial official, is required to exercise independent judgment in representing the public interest foremost, ahead of the council member's individual interests. I just had a conversation with Norm Haney in the hall. He and I actually agree about the gray area in the planning codes. And we don't agree on, on everything, or even a lot, but if we can agree on some things as, as often as we have, I think that suggests that you'll have a tough time finding someone who will actually be more fair and informed in the way they vote. I've invested a lot of time and brain cells in getting up to speed on all the code and such, and I'm not going away. I have some role to play in the city process. That could even include coming back on the commission if the next candidate doesn't pan out as expected. And if communication truly was the main issue, surely we could find a way to address that. So in the end, I remain puzzled about why there was no explicit warning, and about how and why no more constructive solution was thought, was, was sought. And finally, I'll observe what I've heard from some others, that whether you like it or not, the nature of your choice of replacement will suggest to the community what the ultimate intent of this move has been. I mean, whatever the complex variety of your motives may be, the public will end up distilling that down to some simple consensus about what it was all about. Thanks.
Thank you. And the next speaker is John Maza.
Good evening. I want to, I want to actually thank Craig for his service, and he did work very hard. But I do believe that councilmen have the absolute right to have their commissioners be picked by them. Absolute. Now, people may disagree on Trump being able to do that, but on the city council, it's absolute. And so what I wanted to just talk about real quickly is, being a commissioner takes a lot of time, and you also have to learn a lot of facts. My binder this week has 13 different items. I don't know how we can do it, but we're gonna try. Okay? And it has been that way lately. And we have commissioners, with the possible exception of one, who actually put in the time and go visit the properties and, and study it and look up the rulings and, and the rules. And we pretty much have over the years, we've had, and so I think there are plenty of candidates out there. There's a couple of exceptions, and we had a couple of commissioners who invented vertical surfaces being horizontal and things like that. But it, right now is a very, very, very critical time. And in our next two meetings after this one, we're doing accessory dwelling units and short-term rentals. And so we're talking about a temporary commissioner handling that. And those are very complicated issues, especially since the coastal has changed some things. Very complicated issues. And we're only gonna have one meeting unless we can't get done with them. And we're gonna pass them on to you. And I don't expect you to go through and spend three, four hours on something like that in your meetings, or spend eight or nine hours studying it. So what we do is going to be very important. So I, I hope, I understand what we're talking about now is putting in a temporary commissioner. I hope we can get a commissioner who knows what he's doing already. It, it is impossible to learn all the codes in two weeks. Maybe if you were a commissioner in the past, even if the codes have changed, you know how to go about it. But it is literally impossible to do that. And then it's very, it's a very challenging thing to do that on a major item, where you have to look at the state law and everything else. So I hope you're a temporary commissioner. Your, your permanent commissioner will have time to learn. But these next two meetings are a really big deal. And so I hope you can appoint somebody who's either done it before, or convinces you that they actually know what they're doing. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Well, thank you to the speakers. I just want to start by addressing everyone from Big Rock. This has nothing to do with Big Rock. It has nothing to do with development at all. Absolutely zero. My family's had a home in Big Rock since before you were born, and they, we still do. So I care greatly about Big Rock. I'll be there tomorrow morning. I'm there all the time. And I care about all of Malibu. Doesn't, actually, that's Big Rock exclusive. It doesn't matter. And I care about Craig, too. I think Craig's great. I've known him pretty much all my life, to some degree. And it's like I said earlier, and I'm sorry if there's people wanting to speak, they didn't get a chance. That's certainly not my intention. Wasn't my goal at all. I have made a change, but it has nothing to do with degrading our mission statement, or, nothing in my record reflects I am pro-development in any way whatsoever. Being on the planning commission for seven years, being in Public Works before that, being on the city council. I mean, I'm proud of my record. Other people may not feel the same way or want to vote for me, but I take it absolutely very seriously. So, and as far, and I understand, Craig, you're unhappy. I, I know that. Of course, we've talked, and I've offered to talk with you more, but I'm not gonna air this out in public like that. That's not my way. I don't think it's right. But it has nothing to do with trying to develop Malibu. It's, it's not even part of the conversation, though it may seem that way to you at this time. So with that said, I do, I am selecting another, a new planning commissioner. And I guess, I don't quite understand how it works, but it has to be a temporary appointment at first.
So what we're gonna do is, under state law, we post notice of a vacancy and, an unscheduled vacancy, and we'll collect resumes in response to that, that notice. But in the interim, under the circumstances with, you know, so much on the city, city's agenda, you can appoint someone to serve in, on an interim basis until we, you make your permanent appointment.
And when can I make that appointment permanent?
Probably by the next meeting. We'll have, you'll have had enough days.
Okay. So my selection for the planning commission is David Wile. David's been in Malibu over 60 years. He has a law degree. He has run, he's run entertainment businesses. As far as in Malibu, he's been on the, he's been a member of the La Casa Homeowners Association, including, he worked on the overlay district after the 93 fire, which was to limit development, by the way. He's Pepperdine Law School, taught negotiations as an adjunct professor. He is an active volunteer for Meals on Wheels. He's worked with Walk on Water. He's also been very actively involved with his kids' little league softball, AOSO, basketball teams. So he's actually a family man here, which really counts, too. He's been everything from a paper delivery boy, the Evening Outlook back in the day, in the Colony, in a Malibu road. He was a dishwasher in the Malibu Colony Cafe Coffee Shop. If you guys remember that, then you are as old as David and I, and have been in Malibu a long time. Lifeguard at the Malibu Colony. So he's a strong, long history in Malibu. David is here now. He's in back. And I just want to thank him very much. We spent a lot of time together the last few days discussing this, and what it involves, and discussing that there might be some people very concerned. But very excited to welcome David to the planning commission, and thank you very much for serving. It's really appreciated. And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Okay, so, Kristi, is there any action required?
Can we adjourn the meeting in the memory of?
Yes, we will be adjourning the meeting in memory of Julia Snyder. We are now, do I have a motion to adjourn?
I'll second your motion.
Okay, we are now adjourned at 10:27 PM. Thank you.
Public safety issues.